May 1st, City Council meeting. Mr. Smith, can you give us the prayer of the day? Please, sir.
Blessing now to the prayer. Oh gracious and almighty God, to give us every good and perfect gift created of all mankind. We come before your presence once again to say thank you. Thank you, Father, for this opportunity to be servants of this city. We ask for, Lord, to continue to lead us and guide us in all that we shall do and say with pleasing and acceptably in thy sight. In thy son, Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Back to the day. On April 30th, eighteen oh three, representatives of the United States in Napoleonic France concluded negotiations for the Louisiana Purchase, a massive land sale that doubles the size of the young American republic. What was known as Louisiana Territory comprised most of modern-day United States between the Mississippi and the Rocky Mountains. With the exception of Texas, parts of New Mexico and other pockets of land already controlled by the United States. Back to the day.
All right. Is that several minutes? Do you need any adjustments to minutes and not the promotion to approve?
Yeah, just the, on the minutes side of things, we had gotten a draft of minutes and then it appeared that they were heavily edited, so I don't know who instituted those changes to those minutes from the draft to what they were now.
I had some part in that.
Okay. Well, that needs to be direct from what was actually occurring in the meeting. So we need to not change them to inaccuracies. So there were some public comment that were adjusted, some comments I made that were adjusted or just completely removed. So we want to make sure we're doing that. So I don't know if we want to totally redraft these and then come back at the next meeting to get it accurate.
Okay. We'll do it.
So let me ask you, what's the procedure with the minutes? I mean, you type them? And they go to review by who? Is that the process?
They have been going out to be reviewed first. And then if there's any changes from anybody, then they get.
But do we get the draft copy? We don't get the draft copy.
It was, it was available, yeah.
It was available to us?
We, we haven't gotten them consistently. We got it this last meeting or this last one as a draft, but prior to that, we weren't getting them as consistent. The draft.
But are there major changes to it or omissions or things taken out of it?
I don't believe they're major. I mean, but there was, there were a couple of additions or additions.
Okay, so we'll bring it back next council meeting? No problem.
Okay.
All right. Next up, agenda review.
Yes, sir, Mayor, just, just for the, the public and not to tie their time up. And on consultation with the labor attorney, we can take the labor negotiations and move them to after the meeting. And it will still be in accordance with Florida State statute. So I'm just recommending that we move that to after the meeting. So we can keep the public moving through and then we're not wasting their time.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you, Chuck. Appreciate it. Okay. Next up, proclamation for International Firefighters' Day. We've got a couple of our firefighters in the house. Appreciate y'all coming over and being a part of this. So it's the International Firefighters' proclamation, and it reads as such. Whereas International Firefighters' Day is observed each year on May 4th to honor and remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities, including Austin Duran, a member of the Apopka Fire Department, who gave the ultimate sacrifice in two thousand twenty-two. To express gratitude to those that have served in the line of work and to show support and appreciation for those who presented, who presently serve. And whereas regardless of the language a firefighter speaks or the country in which he or she works and resides, all firefighters fight against the same enemy, fires. And whereas firefighters follow a long line of tradition and honor that inspires them to help colleagues, neighbors, and strangers alike. And whereas at a moment's notice, firefighters are quick to respond to uncertain situations to mitigate danger and combat the threat of destructive fire in order to protect individuals, families, and the economic being of our communities. And whereas the demand of firefighting are accompanied by both personal and physical tools that all firefighters knowingly accept while risking their lives to protect the lives of others. And now therefore, I Brian Nelson, Mayor of the City of Apopka, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 4th, two thousand twenty-four as International Firefighters' Day. So come on, who would like to get up? Get up. Picture that. Chief, you're recognized.
All right. Well, first and foremost, I want to thank the mayor and commissioner for the recognition. We also want to thank the minimum of the Apopka Fire Department for their dedication, day in and day out. There are certainly a lot of things stated in this, in this document that are true. You know, they face trials and tribulations from eight o'clock in the morning till eight o'clock the next morning. So we really appreciate everything, everything that you guys do. So we were kind of joking the other day, May, May the 4th. We're just happy to get to share Star Wars Day with, with the same, the same date. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. All right. We've got a presentation by Dio on the Golden Gem reclaimed water storage pond repair update. Dio?
Good, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Deirdre Atwood, Public Service Director. Over the past few weeks, we had several inquiries and numerous traffic and social media on the pond liner breach and vicinity by depression at the Golden Gem Reclamation Water Storage Pond. As you know, we became aware of this issue back in January the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four and reported to the regulatory agency on January the thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Today, I'm pleased to introduce it to you, our expert, Dr. Devo Siram from Devo Engineering, who is a subconsultant to the city contracted engineering firm, Inwood Consultant Engineering, and has been working several months on this project. Devo will provide an overview of its finding and, and the remediation plan. Dr. Devo is a graduate of UF, University of Florida. He has done his, he's an honorary student there. He did his first degree, his master's and his PhD from that, that university. He has been an expert in engineering practice for forty years and an expert in geotechnical engineering, geohygeology, groundwater, among many facets of engineering. And is well-known in Florida, the Caribbean, and around many regions of United States. He's also an expert witness on numerous complex engineering failures, forensic evaluation. So with no further delay, I will ask him to come to the podium and provide his presentation.
Thanks, Devo. Yeah, I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-six.
Move the mic up.
Sorry, okay. So just remind me if it drops back down. I've been doing this since nineteen eighty-six, which makes it forty years in twenty twenty-six. And I'll tell you something, the technology we have today, I wish I had that when I started in the practice. What we have today is amazing compared to what we had in nineteen eighty-six. I was the first student at the University of Florida to be assigned a personal computer. That's to tell you how old I am. Now, the, what I'm going to describe to you is on the scale of complexity in what we do, maybe a nine out of a ten, but I've tried to simplify it as much as possible. The, the first thing I'd like to, for those of you who are not familiar with the project, I'd like to get you oriented to where we are. In the background is Golden Gem Road. To the left is Ponkin, and then the four twenty-nine is to the east. And I'm going to use the mouse and cursor through this video. This is actually channel nine's video, not mine. But what you see, let me use a pointer. What, what, what I'm going to describe to you is actually like a movie because it's hard to imagine this would happen. But what you see there is a volcano. And what you see here is what we typically, sorry, I knew this was going to happen, is what we would normally call a sinkhole, but I hesitate to call it a sinkhole. And what I'm calling that is equivalent to a mineshaft collapse. It's very different from a sinkhole because it's, does not look like one. When you look into it, what you see is a vertical cylinder, seventy-five feet wide, almost perfectly circular, which you don't find in nature, that goes down to a depth of over thirty feet. So it looks like, like a sinkhole. It has a genesis of a sinkhole. But when I describe it and tell you how we fix it, you have to think about it as fixing a mineshaft, a vertical mineshaft. Now, the volcano on the side, I'll show you an image of it underwater, what it looks like. It actually is an impressive underwater lidar that was done with underwater equipment used by the US Navy, and you'll see what it looks like underwater. It is, I'm going to call the volcano innocuous. I don't think we have to worry about it, and I'll explain why. The mineshaft we need to fix. It is, to me, not unexpected. I think when this project was conceived, there was not enough thought process on the soils and the nature of the land where we are. But then again, I'm an expert. I've done over a hundred litigation cases in the state of Florida on subjects like this. I don't expect every engineer practicing to have my experience. I've also done the largest reservoir in Florida, the CW Bill Young. When it failed, I got involved. Now, this here is, I'm going to point now to this. This is what I'm calling a mineshaft. It was discovered by the city on January the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Now, I looked at this satellite imagery. We, we get satellite images now two times a month on infrared from all the modern satellite technology we use. You have to get high-security clearance to use their programs, but I have it. So I went on and I started looking at this reservoir on the satellite images twice a month to see how this developed and if it actually developed before January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. And I'll show you some of the satellite images. The satellite images are very appropriate for this because what they do is they detect infrared. They are telling you where it's wet, where it's dry, where it's upland, and I can show you the water level in the reservoir two times a month, where it is exactly. And what I can also show you is that this thing actually failed on January the fifth, twenty twenty-four. Not because somebody saw it, because we have satellites that are actually pinging the ground and picking up that. So this, it was not there in December twenty twenty-three. It definitely was not there in November twenty twenty-three. I'll show you the reservoir levels, but I see it in, on January the fifth, twenty twenty-four. The city sees it about twenty days later. Now, this is what I call a mineshaft. When you look down this, what you're seeing is actually, I don't want to use the word impressive because it's going to cost you money. So impressive and money don't really go together. But it is a, actually, an amazing feature that's approximately ninety feet long. Oh my goodness, I did it again. I knew this was going to happen. Let me get back to it. Now, the shape of this, I called papaya, but you may tell me that it has a different shape. But it looks like a papaya. It has a big lobe at the bottom and a small lobe at the top. And inside of it, when you look down, you are seeing vertical sides all the way down. It's almost like concrete. We, we don't see that. We don't see a shaft that's seventy-five foot diameter, thirty foot deep with vertical sides. That's not something we see, but I'll explain to you why that happened and what we are looking at. Now, I'm going to try and pull this forward now without messing up again. So I'm going to take you into the hole. And you could look down. And now you can see. What you see there, that water level you see in there, the ground on the floor of this particular part of the reservoir. Now, this reservoir is not three cells. It's one cell with three terraces. So it's basically one pond terracing down at three different elevations. It starts at sixty-nine, comes down to sixty-seven, and then goes down to sixty because there was a plan to keep this above the water table. Certainly, that didn't work out exactly, but the design concept originally, if you look at the original plan, it had a water table of sixty-two and a flat bottom of sixty-seven. And that's the way the borrow pit was permitted in twenty sixteen, with a flat bottom of sixty-seven. When the borrow pit contractor got out there and was told, take as much as you want out of this pit, he couldn't. He had to stop. He couldn't. He can only get to sixty-seven at certain parts of the pit. And I'll show you where he could and where he couldn't. As he got to the north side of the pit, he had to go up in elevation because he couldn't control the water. The water became a problem. And this sixty-seven that was conceived on the plans was not achievable in reality because forget about geotechnical engineers, forget about borings. We have something more short than that. We have a contractor out there digging the ground, trying to get the dirt out, to take it out as much as he can. And he's permitted to do it, and he can't. And I'll show you where he gets to and where he stops before the reservoir project starts and why that should have been considered in the final design. Because that is proof of where you, where you can actually control the water and have a successful project. That I consider a big miss by the designers. Now, but I, I also have a fix for you today. So I'm not going to leave you with doom and gloom. I have a fix, but I'm going to suggest additional work that's out of my area of expertise to have a specialist look at this from a holistic standpoint. Now, the, that's thirty-five feet deep. The water you see in there is that light green water that is our aquifer. That is the Florida aquifer water level you're seeing in there. It's not the water table. That's the water we actually drink. That's connected directly to the lime rock. There is a, a connection going from here into the deep rock, which is where that soil went. That soil did not go horizontally because it's not there and the water, some of it went horizontally, but the majority of it went straight down because we are, we are calculating about two hundred million gallons of water lost. Now, two hundred millions gallons of water, if you're familiar with pumps, in thirty days, that's about six thousand gallons a minute over thirty days being lost. A typical big pump you see out there, the contractors are using, is fifteen hundred gallons a minute. So this is like four pumps going in thirty days, twenty-four seven. That's being lost. Now, if we had lost this water in one day, it would have been catastrophic. Why? Two hundred million gallons over twenty-four hours? That's a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a minute. That's not something we have ever heard of in Florida to get rid of that water and chunk it down into the aquifer. So in a sense, the liner helped us. Because when the liner, when this mineshaft broke out below the liner, the liner only, one of the seams gave way and the rest of it held and water just poured through a seam like a spout. And I think that actually prevented a catastrophe. And I'll show you that spout. Now, the liner we know is also very effective. And the reason we know that is because what happened here with this volcano, and I'll backward a little bit, see if I can see the volcano. It's off on the side here. The volcano actually is very unique in that where that volcano occurred is another phenomenon that we don't see every day. But we have seen it before. And we've seen it especially in the deep wells in Florida. And we see it where parking garages rain down into a manhole and an air pocket hammers out. What happened with that volcano is all of the soil airspace below the bottom liner suddenly got filled. That volcano left us a clue of where our escape, the last pieces of air remained. And then it blew out like an air gun and bursted out like an air gun because the water crowded it out, filled all the airspace up. And the air started concentrating at this one point until the air pressure built up because it entirely filled with water. And the air has nowhere to go, but it sees this liner above it like a very thick balloon, burst it, and burst it, and forms a volcano. That's what that is. That's not the point where all of this dirt ejected. That's a different phenomenon that occurred when it rapidly filled and all the air couldn't escape. And that's a clue that was left for us by the volcano. It tells us where the last man was standing. That was the last point to get saturated under the sixty-foot liner. That's the clue it left us. Now, I'm going to give you a quick geology one oh one because I'm going to try and get you a little bit educated on something that's very technical and not generally known. Geology one oh one on Apopka. The first thing I did when I saw this, when I got this project is I started looking at the residential wells around it. I wanted to make sure that we were not affecting residents. So I went, there's one residential well that's actually quite close to the site, and I pointed out here. That's the residential well, and that's the site. The good thing about technology today that we didn't have in eighty-six is the geology of that well, which was drilled in nineteen forty-seven, is documented by a geologist and entered onto the internet. So I'm going to show you the precise geologic profile of that well drilled in nineteen forty-seven, and they have the samples. And they went back in and reclassified them. Now, when I talk about layers in Apopka, you have to think about the age of these layers. Because if you don't think about the age, you start thinking, well, they join together. Actually, they don't. The first layer is the Ocala limestone, which is our drinking water supply. That was formed thirty-three to thirty-four, thirty-eight million years ago by shells depositing under the sea. Bear in mind, Florida was not connected to the continent until twenty-three million years ago. We had no connection to the continent. There is not a single fossil, there is not a single dinosaur in Florida. Because we were not connected to the continent, there was a big trough, sea channel between Florida and the continent. So that's there in the thirty-three to thirty-four million period. Now, the second layer, that's going to be important for today's discussion. These are the three layers that come into play today in my presentation, is the hoton. That layer in this area is fifteen to eighteen million years old. That's what the mineshaft fell into. Fifteen to eighteen million years old, and it was deposited under the sea. It was not coming off the Appalachians. It's purely a sea deposit. And the thing about the hoton is we never touch it. When we are doing engineering design in Florida, we never try to get close to it because of two reasons. One is it protects our aquifer. It acts as a natural confining layer above our drinking water supply. Nobody lets us penetrate that, that we have known forever. The second thing about the hoton layer is that it sits on top of limestone that was exposed for millions of years to rain. And that limestone surface is jagged and eroded and has cavities. So the hoton, now that's sitting on top of this cavernous limestone, has found ways to enter it and become loose, not because of a sinkhole, but just naturally loose because here is this layer sitting on top of the cavernous layer. So that layer has pockets of looseness, and we know that because we see it on the site next door to this. The drilling that was done for the park development next door shows where the hoton was eroded. And you probably have eroded hoton directly below you right now, but it doesn't really matter because once you have sixty, seventy foot of protection of hard soil above it, who cares? It's too deep to out of sight. Most of those Orlando buildings, there's eroded hoton under the high rises, but they're too deep and they're piled. Nobody, it doesn't make a difference. Now, the layer above the hoton now, to me, is the most interesting layer in Florida. It's called the Cypress Head. And that layer does not occupy a large proportion of Florida. It occupies actually a very narrow belt that includes all the ridges, Lake Wales Ridge, the Trail Ridge, parts of Seminole County, Altamont Springs, and all of Apopka within a certain area. The Cypress Head was formed by erosion of the Appalachian Mountains, deep erosion, where it cut sand and it cut heavy minerals that are not found in any deposits anywhere in the world. The forces when the glaciers melted were so strong that they cut the heavy minerals that we're mining today in Clay County that came off in that same event, sat in the sea. And when the sea level went down, it formed dunes and it blew into Florida because the wind direction changed, magnetic poles changed, wind direction changed, and dunes started coming into Florida. That's what the Cypress Head is. Now, a lot of it came by currents offshore, a lot of it came by water, but a large proportion simply blew in to Florida when the wind changed and covered up the forest. And if you go to the Trail Ridge, you'll see it. They have vertical trees under the ridge, standing up. It covered it so fast. That layer is the layer that we're dealing with, and that's in the two to three million year range. That's still older. Ice Age started two point six million years ago, or New Ice Age was only two point six million years ago. So this layer now, geologically, it's old compared to Orlando. Parts of Orlando is less than a million years old. Parts of Orlando is less than a million years old, less than eight hundred thousand years. Cape Canaveral was not there four thousand years ago. Simply was not there, did not exist. The, uh. The thing about Apokka is this. The, all of the land drains into closed depressions. There's no natural surface water outfall and this is what's happening under the ground. You have surface flow coming into the superficial aquifer, enters a closed depression. And the only place it can go out is either straight down to the aquifer or straight up by evaporation, nowhere else. And ninety percent of Apokka is like that. And we have several of these on our site. Now, let's talk about what we have on our site. There were borings done on our site. We have a distinct superficial aquifer which has a higher water elevation than the Floridian aquifer. And to figure out how the superficial aquifer actually flows and gets to the Floridian in these focal points of entry is extremely complicated in Apokka. In fact, I think it still defies a modern geotechnical engineer. We haven't figured out a way to precisely map that surface of water in the superficial aquifer draining on the clay and getting to these depressions and then going down. But on this site, we have an advantage. The advantage is that we have the landfill where they have been recording levels and groundwater elevations for many years. So we took the landfill elevations and made contours of the water flow direction. And what you will see is on top of this hill here, you have an eighty-five contour. This is seventy-nine. And then this flows off this way, but coming this way, there's, there are high elevations of eighty-five. And this particular pond bottom is set at eighty-one on the subdivision. This pond bottom is at ninety-one. Compare that to sixty-nine here. Sixty-seven and sixty. So we are very deep compared to what, uh, what's normally done here. Now, that's with the superficial aquifer. What's the other piece of information we need? What is the water level in the Floridian aquifer? It turns out we have that on this site. Here it is. It's fifty-three point five at this location. Fifty-nine point five and fifty-six point three in this sinkhole. These are two natural depressions that existed on this site that were known and investigated. And on this end, they are measuring sixty-eight point six. So we know that this area here is the most leaky natural depression. This is the second most leaky natural depression. The lakes around here are all in the fifty-five range. And these were monitored over several months. The design that was done for this reservoir was based on this data, not considering what was coming from uphill. So this bottom now was set at sixty-nine, this bottom was set at sixty-seven, this bottom at sixty, and this one at sixty-five. Now, this did not plot good. It came out very grainy. But what I, what I showed you here was the elevations that the borrow pit contractor was actually able to achieve when he was told to go for broke and dig everything to sixty-seven and take it. This is what he was able to achieve. The shaded area you see here, that was the only area he could get to sixty-seven. Up here, it's in the eighties. Up here, some of them are in nineties. That's all he could do. So with this information now, this was completed. And then the reservoir design was finalized when they saw this. Because they had gone in with sixty-seven and sixty-two and then this happened. This doesn't show clearly on your screen, but I did shade the area that was sixty-seven. That's the only area that they could actually achieve the elevation. And if you were going to ask me today, that's the only area you can actually do sixty-seven. What the contractor could dig and keep in the dry is what's shaded now. That should be sixty-seven today. This is sixty-seven and this is sixty and this is sixty-nine. When you look at what elevations he was able to achieve up here, it's at least ten, fifteen foot higher. Now. What we look at is when we have a collapse like this, we start looking at the old areas that predates the citrus. And this is nineteen thirty-nine and you can see all the lake level shorelines in nineteen thirty-nine. In nineteen thirty-nine, if you overlay this on the modern, on the modern topography, you'll see that all the lakes were five to six feet higher, which is what happened in Orlando. The water level has declined in the aquifer and that's reflected in these lakes. So these lakes used to be five to six feet higher than they are today. But the most interesting thing about this, which I don't think you can see, is where we have the breach today. That was a depression. That was actually a visible depression on the nineteen thirty-nine aerial, just like the two sinkholes that are known today. This, this is nineteen forty-seven. That one was nineteen thirty-nine. This is nineteen forty-seven. This shows the breach and it shows what I interpreted as a directional flow. It also shows up on nineteen forty-seven as a depressional feature. So we are not, there's no big surprise that we are heading into this today. Now, what happened at the Golden Gem? By November twenty twenty-three, so this is the new sinkhole, these are the old sinkholes that pre-existed. What I drew here was the nineteen fifty-eight contours of the land. And you'll see that all three sinkholes, the two old ones and the new one, all fall on the hundred-foot contour line. And there's a reason for that, which I don't want to get into, but the sinkholes occur at the seventy-foot and the hundred-foot. These three are all under hundred-foot, exactly where we expect them. Now, what happened is this. By November twenty twenty-three, let me go forward a slide and then I'll come back. Okay, uh, this is what I want to get to. This is a satellite imagery from November the fifth, twenty twenty-three. And here you can see it's almost brimful on November the fifth, twenty twenty-three. It's about plus ninety, which would put, make it, uh. More than twenty-one foot of water in the high spot, uh, more, more than thirty foot of water in the low spot. So that's the satellite and this is January the fifth, twenty twenty-four. And here you'll see a disruption already on the satellite imagery. Infrared is picking up. Something is going on here already. In January the fifth, the city finds out about it on January the twenty-fourth. Nobody uses this technology, you know, so don't think that the city should be checking satellite imagery. So let me go back now a bit here. What, what happened and what caused this failure? The, uh, by November twenty twenty-three, the reservoir is reaching almost its peak stage. It's above ninety based on the satellite. By early January twenty twenty-four, I'm actually reading this text here if you want to follow me. The sinkhole roof collapse. When I say collapse, if you want to imagine that there's a huge animal burrow underground that's covered with eight to fifteen foot of clay sand as a roof bridge. The water gets high enough to break that bridge. And that happens in January twenty twenty-four. And it falls in and the, the bridge over this eroded area now is broke. But the reservoir does not drain catastrophically. Because it, it's, the liner holds over that distance, which to me is incredible. That it held and a little slip tear opened at one of the seams and water started pouring in. And it took, uh, until. I, I would think this started to drain in late December. It took at least thirty days for them to realize the water is gone. Because it drained slowly enough where we prevented a catastrophe. If that had drained all at once, I think we would have had a bigger issue. It did not. So I'm still impressed by what that liner did. Now, the collapse is evident from January fifth, twenty twenty-four. It takes about thirty days to drain out two hundred million gallons. There was a rush towards the end. How do we know that? Because of the volcano. You don't get a volcano unless you have a rush of water squeezing out that air suddenly. And fires off like an air gun. That's the only way that happens. So when the water rushes into the hole, it runs under the liner and also lightly saturates the soil below the liner, which only has about five feet of soil that's dry. And five feet of soil that's dry means there's one foot of air for every, air is twenty percent of soil. So for five foot of soil, dry soil, there's one foot of air. So that one foot of air now explodes out at this point and forms. Let me get a picture of what that looks like. You'll see, this is a. Now, can you imagine this feature? This is what our submarine imaging did. That little volcano is sitting under there at that spot. That was the last man standing. That's where the last piece of air remained. And that was the escape point. It all accumulated there until the pressure got too high and it burst the liner and blew up like a volcano. That's our sand volcano. So we're going to fix that also. That, while it looks like it's intimidating, it's innocuous. It's just a, we see them a lot in borrow pits. Okay, so let me get back here. Um, we were able to map the feature and this, you know, this is what it looks like. It's big. It's intimidating when you look at it at the surface. It's a huge feature. But I've been there and I've done that. I've seen worse than this in my career, far worse than this. So it doesn't intimidate me, but to the layperson, it's going to be intimidating.
Is there you in that photo?
No, that's Henry. Henry.
Oh, okay.
There's a safety version.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So.
Just one question. Will it continue to expand that, that all there?
No. The good thing about this is it's in clay. Clay is solid. If it were in sand, you'd be eroding. It, it'll be forming a cone. So I'm gonna get along here. I'm burning up a bunch of your time. So, uh, it's actually a big feature. And this is what it looked like shortly after. This is the explanation of it, the roof collapse. And this is the sand volcano. So I'm going to try and get through this a little quicker. I tend to get long-winded, sorry. Why did this collapse take place? Now, the thing is, if you have sixty foot of soil or thirty foot of soil above an underground burrow, that's seventy-five foot in diameter. That soil, the weight of that soil is not exerted on that roof. Why? Because you have something we call soil arching. The full pressure of the soil never reaches the top of the roof. But water is a different animal. If you change twenty foot of soil above a roof to twenty foot of water, the weight on top of that roof goes from one million pounds to six million pounds. Water transmits the force fully. It does not behave like soil. So the weight acting on top of this roof as a result of this reservoir, when it got up to the high stage, broke it. So we broke the roof because that roof never experienced that weight before. Soil hangs up itself. It does not really push down and exert the weight at that depth. And we did the calculations on it. These are strictly theoretical calculations and we were able to calculate what diameter of eroded zone for this clay, based on the strength of the clay to collapse it. Simple roof calc. Now, have you repaired these before? Yes. I've seen more impressive than this. Here's one right up the road from you. Now, one thing I want to tell you ahead of time. Apokka has two types of sinkholes. It has what we call, uh, tectly mantle cast sinkholes, which is what this area is, where you have a hundred feet of soil over the limestone. And then you have areas of Apokka which what we call thinly mantle cast, where you have twenty-five to thirty foot of soil above the limestone. There's only one part of Apokka that has thinly mantle cast. That's directly ahead of Rock Springs on the Kelly Park Road area. That has thinly mantle cast that resembles Ocala. During Hurricane Irma, we had over twenty sinkholes there. Ocala had over a hundred. I was on the TV all the time trying to calm people down on Kelly Park Road during Hurricane Irma, telling them this is going to pass. And everybody was scared, sinkhole after sinkhole. I said, you are in thinly mantle cast. This is going to happen after a hurricane, but tectly mantle cast doesn't know it's raining. Thinly mantle cast knows it is. I can show you a map. All of the sinkholes are clustered right on the top of Rock Springs where we have thinly mantle cars that resembles Ocala. Everybody calmed down when I told them Ocala had over a hundred while you had less than twenty. So what happens when you take that much dirt off? Is you change the cars from tectly mantled to thinly mantled. So the sinkhole that we are seeing here, or the collapse we are seeing here, is what you would find in thinly mantle cars. It does not occur naturally in this area because naturally we did not remove so much soil. We don't dig that deep. So we converted tectly mantle cast to thinly mantle cast. So we are seeing a sinkhole that resembles a Kelly Park Road Rock Springs sinkhole. Now, here's one close to Rock Springs. This one was nineteen feet in diameter and thirty-two feet deep. When I saw it, I got scared. It was right after Tropical Storm Fay in August two thousand and eight. And you'll notice this was made out to David Atwood. You know, he had me fix this when he was at Orange County. And this was a nightmare to fix because nineteen feet, thirty-two feet deep, nineteen foot. And we tried to fix this every which way and it kept running away from us until we finally came up with a new plan, which is a plan I'm offering today to fix this. Now, this is not saying something we came up with originally. We spent a lot of his money when he was at Orange County trying to figure out how to fix this one. And it was trial and error, but we finally found out the solution. We have to go with broken concrete and rock first. Do not try to stabilize these features with soil. It's going to run away and you'll never be able to to, to seal it. What you have to do is go in first and put big rocks in, block it off and then grade the rocks up in size. So you're coming up, you're lowering the rock size as you come up. And then what we did at the top was very unique. And we don't have to do it here. We have other methods. The reason we use these concrete blocks is because Orange County had these in their supply and they were free. So we use articulating concrete blocks and we formed a new bridge above it. So we're not going to try and seal up this mine shaft because that's going to be a futile effort. And we're going to spend millions of dollars on concrete. And we don't know when it's going to end. So we're going to rock it with big rocks, grade it up and then bridge it. Our repair plan, then we have done this plan, uh, which follows that outline. And this is the outline we specified in addition to some other factors. And we have sent this to the city to get prices. I do not recommend you put this out to bid per se. It's too complicated. The way this needs to be fixed is we need to work directly with a contractor because there are going to be changes. So you need to select a contractor, have us with them. And we don't want them to be fighting us about this and this and this price. We need to do what you're told and you charge the city less or more than your price. We gave you a schedule. We gave you a schedule to bid, to prepare an estimate. But we don't expect that to be exactly. This is not quantifiable. And I'm going to end there unless you need more. I have a, this is, these are the fantastical shapes we see. And this is our site here. Let me get this working. This is our site and you can see the groundwater flow coming in. These are the shapes of the cast that we see. But, you know, that's for nerds like me to look at. This is what we see. If you go in a satellite and you look down, that's, that's what you see. This is a high ground. These are all the closed cast basins in Apopka. This is an aquifer level. But it's not like Orlando. It's actually very pronounced, well-defined, dragon-shaped cast. This is how the aquifer flows across the site from Mount Plymouth. And from our site, we know the aquifer flows to Wakiva, flows to the east. That's things we can do now. What I wanted to show you here, if you can see it on your screen, you see all these little pop marks? That's thinly mantled cast sinkholes. That's what we expect in thinly mantled cast. And that's what we have in the Kelly Park area. That's the city of Apopka limits. That's what the roads on, that's what all the sinkholes and the springs. So we are not in a high sinkhole area per se because we have tectically mantled cast. But on the perimeter, when you get to twenty-five and thirty-five feet, we turn into Okala. So I'm going to.
Okay, so I'm standing at the.
I can stop here if you'd like.
Yeah, okay.
Right. So I have some videos if you're interested.
All right, questions, counsel.
The question I have is that you said two hundred million gallons of water was lost. So did this water contaminate any of the wells in the area?
Not that we can tell. You would have had people walking in here already. You know, we have had this happen before in Oquee in nineteen ninety-eight, where we had drainage wells that were putting in algae straight into the drinking water supply. That didn't happen here, as best as we can tell. I looked at all the public supply wells around here. They are deep. They are cased down to at least a hundred and fifty feet. So the flow in this zone would be in the upper part of the Okala limestone, not the deeper part, which goes from one fifty to about four hundred feet. Anybody else?
What, what does that mean when you say the upper part? When it, when the water flowed and you said it, it would not have affected the wells? Because the wells are at a hundred and fifty?
The, the wells usually go down at least twenty-five to forty feet below the top of the rock. And then they are cased down to three hundred feet. This actual flow is on top of the hotone and entering the aquifer right at the top. So the wells are actually deeper. I'm not saying that there could potentially be no impacts, but they have been non-reported. And we checked the most immediate well. That starts at a hundred and fifty feet. I have the log for it and it goes down to almost four hundred feet. Now, they would be seeing flushing, if they're flushing it to us, they'll be seeing algae coming in. Because reclaimed water will have algae. Nobody has reported any of that. And the city is on mainly public supply now. And the, the city's wells are all not in the Upper Floridian. They are all in the Lower Floridian. All the modern designs since nineteen eighty-five do not take big public supply wells into the Upper Floridian anymore. We all go down to eight hundred to a thousand feet and go deeper. There's an Upper and a Lower Floridian. Since we started using the Upper Floridian in Orlando for drainage wells, we switched to the Lower Floridian for drinking water supply. We are very lucky. We have the biggest occurrence of freshwater in the world.
Any other questions?
So, so how, I, I mean, it was a lot. You gave us a lot. How are you going to try and remediate this particular? You said it's, it's a sinkhole or is it a volcano? How are you identifying this?
Oh, we have a volcano on the side and that's just academic.
Oh, okay.
So let's forget about the volcano.
Okay.
I just brought that up because it looked nice. But the, the, the mine shaft, we need to fix and seal back. Now, what I suggested is maybe we need to change the design for the upper cell from a liner to a clay. And maybe raise it a bit. But I'm always cognizant of the concept of economic waste. Here, we have built a facility and paid a lot of money for it. As a first step, we need to prevent waste of money and we need to try and fix it. Now, if we can't fix it, then we, we need to change it. But I'm not going to suggest a tear down unless a national consultant comes in and says to do that because then we entered a doctrina economic waste. We're wasting public money because I feel that it's a bad design. I think let's try and fix it. Let's try and get it back in order. It's an excellent project because I worked on the Altamont Springs design to bring that water here. I did all of the crane roost modeling. So we need to try and get it to work. Because remember, all that water was going directly into the Wakiva River. Direct discharge out of weather sphere.
Could you provide a summary, a quick synopsis of exactly what is needed to fix it? Very clear.
Excuse me?
Broken concrete, broken rocks is.
Yes.
Could you kind of clarify that a little so we can kind of understand exactly what's needed to fix it, the solution?
Okay. Imagine we have a shaft that's a hundred foot in diameter and thirty feet deep. And somehow it's at the bottom. It has little channels where it can connect and go deeper. You know, some channels that are unknown. What we don't want to do is to go in there and try and pump grout or concrete because it's going to enter that channel and run away from us. We could spend millions of dollars grouting Florida. But I don't have any stock in any cement company, so I'm not going to suggest that. The, what we do is we go to the bottom and we put big rocks in for starters. That way, we know it's locked in. We create a lock at the bottom with the big rocks, maybe eighteen inch size riprap. And then we come up and we use twelve inch riprap. And then we come up and we use four inch riprap. And then we put visqueen, then we put sand, then we put two layers of reinforcement. And we seal it at the top. So we're building a helmet over it. But the inside, we are not trying to seal that because it's not possible to seal it.
And we're sealing it with what, on top, the ceiling is what?
Yes, on top, we're going to seal it. We're going to build a really strong helmet and make sure no water leaks back through that helmet.
Got a couple of questions.
Yeah, Mr. Nelson?
Dr. Ceram, I really appreciate you taking a deep dive in this. I know it was detailed, but it really did help to kind of understand how and why and where we're at now. Are you able to go back to a few slides, back to where? There was a couple there that we skipped over quickly that I thought had some good information. It's all the way back to where you were showing the imagery of kind of when it started to show signs of failure.
This, this one?
Yes.
Now, where it is, it's right there. You see the disruption?
Hmm.
That's, that's seen and picked up on satellite imagery, January fifth, twenty twenty-four.
And there's a couple of slides before this. Are you able to go back to that one too? Or those ones as well?
I don't have the full suite of satellite imagery.
No, that's okay. Your slides that you prepared, is that what's, that was the one right before?
Okay, this one's, this one was November. This was a month before. I actually have December, but I didn't put it on here because the presentation was getting too long. The reason I use November, it was a Claris satellite imagery that showed the high water line. So I used that and I put the elevation to a point that to figure out how high we got on November the fifth, twenty twenty-three. But we, I have December twenty twenty-three that does not show a disruption, shows high water, but the quality of the imagery is not for city presentation.
Gotcha. Okay. And then are you able to go back to, well, you don't need to go back to it. It's where the air volcano came out, is that on the same contour line that the sinkholes are on?
It turns out it is and don't ask me why.
So that was going to be my question. Is that always consistent that way?
What we saw on the, we looked at the borrow pit contours. And I could show you, I have another image of the borrow pit. And it turns out it's in the low spot that was left in the borrow pit. Now, I have not attached significance to that. But the volcano is at that low spot. Let me see, I have another one. The volcano is right here. Now, these contours are not as refined as what we have. We do have these on points, point elevations. But a volcano corresponds with the lowest point that was left in the borrow pit.
Okay. And, and, and this is a question I'd asked staff earlier as well. And I appreciate staff meeting me out there too. That was very helpful just to understand, just put your eyes on it. My concern was, again, if we fix this area and another breach happens somewhere else, will a volcano breach our berms on the side and potentially instead of water going straight down, it goes out into neighboring properties?
Well, the interesting thing about the volcano, why I'm not getting excited about it, is that reservoir is still holding water to sixty-seven and did not leak out, although the water is lower below it.
Okay. So it's not as much of a concern to us in that capacity?
It did not leak. It blew up, but it's not leaking today. And it didn't leak since.
Understood. And then final question here, not to, would it make sense or would it be more cost-effective if we were to kind of carve out the breached section and no longer use it, make that the new berm?
I think we need to do a cost benefit. I don't know what commitments the city have to Altamont and to St. John's for storage. But certainly I like that idea. I would like to carve this out. What I'd like to do ideally is carve out the sixty-seven to this, what you see here. This is what the borrow, this should be your sixty-seven. Then that's an eighty-five up here. That's a ninety-two up here. So if there was a terracing, it should be done like this. Now, I'm comfortable with this at sixty-seven. Right now, this is sixty-seven, but this is sixty. Because we have firsthand digging experience where the contractor was able to dig this comfortably and stay dry. This is the part. Now, that's a big part of the footprint. So it's not like this is a complete waste of land. But the sixty-seven, I think, is big.
It is. It haven't been out there. It, I mean, it's, it's a massive project.
Yeah.
And I guess my, go ahead.
That, that's the part, that's what I would do if I was starting with a blank canvas. But economic waste, city public funds. I'm cognizant of how we proceed as engineers. It's easy to be conservative and over-conservative, but we need to be pragmatic. I've been in this business a long time. I like to try.
Absolutely. My final question here too is just, if we're going to add in that, similar to what you guys did on Sleepy Hollow, is it too much weight? Because you had said with sand and things like that, the weight, it, it's not as focused on one specific spot that creates a failure. With adding in the riprap and rocks and things like that, is that too much weight in one specific section that we're going to have failures? Lower or are you comfortable in that capacity?
Okay, the rock is inside the house. The roof is above the house. The, the, this roof, we're going to, we're going to fill the house with rock. So there's no erosion underneath there. The rock also has the benefit in that it lets the superficial aquifer and water flow continue.
Gotcha.
We don't want to be blocking flows because that creates other problems. So the rock fills in the house where water is flowing naturally. And then above that, we are going to extend the reinforcement into the unfail areas to provide some actual more reinforcing back in embedment away from it. So it becomes not just on top of the roof. We're going to go back and tie it. Now, we can do a stronger roof. We can use some layers of geogrid. But that's why I wanted, I wanted to go with the contractor as we, as we start this. We need to start cleaning it up. I may change the design during construction, so I would, I need flexibility.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Devo. Appreciate it. Okay, public comment.
Root for public comment?
I live in San Francisco. I know you, you can, you can go next. You're, you're next.
You're next.
Public comment?
I just have a couple of questions to ask. I thank the doctor for a very concise explanation. It coincided with a lot of what I already had found out. Couple of questions I would like to ask him. The superficial aquifer, where it meets the ground below it, there's a transition. It goes from water into some other substrate. Is there any guarantee when someone drills a well that there's a seal between the upper layers and the lower layers? Because my understanding is in lots of occasions, when you drill a well, you have to cap the well because the problem that you're facing is you don't want anything from the surface leaking down into the lower waters. So my first question is, can we guarantee there was no contamination because the casings of the wells were secure? Bear in mind that we've had ground movement. The casings that might have been put in originally could no lo, may no longer be in contact with where it was originally there. Second observation was, the doctor mentioned a bridge, but he didn't specify where it was. I believe the bridge he was referred to is a bridge that's built on the four twenty-nine over Poncon. And information that I had was when the city went to, well, when, when the four twenty-nine was built, there was details, there was a cavity found at two hundred and fifty feet deep. And the cave extended eight hundred feet along the line, parallel to the four twenty-nine. Bear in mind, in August of two thousand seventeen, there was also sinkholes discovered on the four twenty-nine, which had to be repaired. The liner that's currently in there, because of what's happened in there, although there's no, there's no leakage in the other, in the other tiers, can we be certain that the, of the integrity of that liner? Should that liner be completely replaced? I have photographic evidence that the integrity of the liner, as it was installed, was not up to specification in places. It, there was damage to it and it was, it was a botched job. The city have an obligation to St. John's River Management that they supply water to the city of Apopka from Altamont Springs. I want to know what contractual obligations we have. If we're failing in them, what penalties we might face? This project was due to be completed over two years ago. There were extensions granted by St. John's on two occasions to continue the project. One of the, the reasons there was a continuation was that there was a geological survey which identified an area exactly where the sinkhole occurred, where there was sand and there was a granular medium below it. This is what I'm, I'm allegedly told. So if it's true that the city had to grant an extension because they were aware of some anomaly there, what did we actually do to, to, to research that? Were the engineers who were there given all the facts that, that they needed? That's just about all I have to, to say just now. When it comes to public comment, I'll discuss some other parts of this.
That's, this was it.
Yeah. But then there will be public comment for the, for the main part. Well, they're not.
No, this, this is it. This is your four minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I haven't finished yet then. Why was the engineer in charge of this terminated? Why is there allegations that he was forced to make changes to things that he was unhappy about? Why is it that we have been denied access to information that's matter of public record? We would ask the commissioners today to insist that the city provide us with the emails that we request so that we can make an, an honest assessment of, of why this happened. Thank you.
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six Rolling Hills Lane here in Apopka. Mayor Commissioners.
Mayor Commissioners, welcome to our newest member. At any rate, I was, a couple of things. One, unsung hero heroes this time are school crossing guards. Through various means and measures, I substituted in for thirteen shifts over this past, over the month of April. Unbelievable number of kids coming up, parents coming up. Where's Charles? Where's Jody? Are they okay? That type of thing is awesome, the relationship they've established. But also, it struck me when you cover these areas, as many as one in three parents coming in to pick up and drop their kids off are holding their cell phones, talking on the phone. Can't happen. We have people that cross across the crosswalks. So you and I might, as adults, walk around that vehicle. As crossing guards, you cannot allow a child to cross unless that section is clear. We need to work on it. This picture is one of the side of a vehicle that ironically, I was walking through Northwest Recreational Complex. Infrastructure jumped out at me. All we're doing is marking areas, but it jumped up to me for a number of reasons. One, I've talked to you about Northwest Recreational Complex. Fields sixteen, eighteen years ago, that park opened with the existing fields we have. We've added twenty thousand people and haven't added a field. And our answer is, we're gonna add two fields each year for the next three years. Doesn't get it, we need ten fields now. The condition of the fields slaps at infrastructure, adequate staffing to take care of it. We look at our streets and our sidewalks, our potholes have potholes. Our sidewalks have mold on them, which is slip hazards. Just drive down Vic Road and you'll see what I mean along the way. And it's not just one area of doing it. We have to be better. It's, again, infrastructure and staffing. Flooding in a couple of our developments, infrastructure, staffing. CRA extension, we had to get an extension because money that was given to us, we didn't spend. Infrastructure, staffing. Homelessness, failure to spend the money, infrastructure, staffing. Twelve hundred homes going in along Golden Gym. Golden Gym is basically a golf cart with a middle, medium line on it. We've got to do a better job. Wastewater restrictions now. We've got all these new homes coming in, using water to put their new sod in, and I have to restrict my water flow at this point. Infrastructure, staffing. Kelly Park, K through eight, wonderful school opened two years ago. Guess what's gonna be on campus this fall? Portables. We have got to do a better job. Mayor, thank you very much for doing it. Mayor leaving his seat for the Jazz Festival this weekend to flag vehicles driving in and around on the walking paths for Northwest Recreational Complex. Why? We don't have adequate staffing, we don't have adequate signage, so that type of thing doesn't happen, risking the lives of people walking or moving around. I attended Orange County Vision twenty-fifty this last Monday at Zellwood. Didn't see any of you there, neither here nor there, but they've got a wonderful outline plan. Look at twenty-fifty, they're at, we're gonna be adding five hundred thousand people. How many of those are coming to Apopka? What's our twenty-twenty-five plan, our twenty-twenty-six plan, our twenty-fifty plan? We need to be thinking in advance. We look for you to look out for us going forward. We look for you to manage the growth. We look for you to take care of us. And right now, it can be defined in two ways. One, if you always do what you always done, you always get what you always got. The rubber stamping and new development has got to stop. And the other is, if you, other is, failure to plan is planning to fail. And if we don't have the people and the tools, we're getting in trouble. And one of my favorite movies happens to be Music Man. We've got trouble right here in Apopka City, and it starts with a T and it rhymes with plea, and it spells for planning. Thank you.
Nikki McGuire, Naomi Kids Organization. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and everyone in the rightful place. We at Naomi Kids do not discriminate against religion. However, after several people said no to us, but God said yes, I have to take time to say, thank you, God, for making this event possible once again. Thank you to the Rotary Club of Apopka, John Land Trust, and our city commissioners, including our past Commissioner, ex-Vice Mayor Becker, for your financial contribution to this event. Commissioner Anderson, welcome aboard, and don't try to fit his shoes. I encourage you to design your own shoes and wear them well as we will be looking forward to you supporting Naomi Kids in the very near future. Thank you to Sergeant Wiggins, Chief McKinley, Captain Holderfield, Chief Wyland, Pepsi, DJ Glenn, Wolf Lake Middle School Dance Team, Magic Matson, Singer Elismo, all volunteers, and last but certainly not least, Naomi Kids team for your contributions and participations. Thank you in advance to the general public for coming out, as you see up there, on May, on Saturday, May eleventh, ten AM to three PM at Edwards Field, next to Kidland Nelson Park, for A Day to Remember. This year, our freebies include, we're gonna have some prize drawings, treat bags, and toys for kids. Our Kids Zone with games, bounce house, and obstacle course, all free. Limited supply of bicycles, brand-new bicycles and helmets on a first-come basis. Solo performances by Elismo, music by DJ Glenn, a surprise magic show by Matson Entertainment, and dance performances by Wolf Lake Middle School Dance Team. Then we're gonna have, you can also enjoy, a big taste for a small price. Also good food truck will be there with wings, hamburgers, Philly cheesesteak, french fries, and pasta salad. We're gonna have refreshing Pepsi products and snowy shaved ice. I've already earned my snowy pen. Hopefully, you guys earn one. Fresh popcorn and cotton candy. Now, are you looking for the fine prints? Yes, we do have fine prints. We have three requests. One, you visit all the vendor booths to earn free raffle tickets for great prizes and treats. Two, show us your throwing skills by attempting to dunk our Police Chief McKinley and our Fire Chief Wyland. The money raised from the dunk tank will go towards Shop With A Cop, Apopka Fire Department, and Naomi Kids Summer Camp Program. Three, participate in our fifty-fifty raffle where you will get fifty percent of the money collected. Please visit Naomi Kids on Facebook for this and upcoming events. I encourage everyone to strive for perfection in everything we do as we remember, we are all imperfect people living in God's perfect world. It's, it's all about what we do and not our expectations of others. Thank you for your time.
Leroy Bell, Maude Helen. Mayor, Commissioners. My friend Ron Olson just said that you guys have to take care of the citizens. And that's, and I'm, I ask you guys to do that. I'm gonna ask you to do some homework. I'm gonna ask you to go down to the Apopka Police Department and ask them to let you view a cam video of Saturday to twenty-seventh in the front of, what that is, Hawthorne and Michael Dratton Boulevard, where we seen one of their police officers followed, parked behind the, at the, the funeral home, walked across the parking lot, kept behind a young man. The young man ran. He pulled the young man's shirt off him. Now, whatever this young man did, if he was wrong, he need to face what he done. But this police officer tased this young man several times whilst he was on the ground. He beat this young man whilst he was on the ground. Whatever the man did, if he was wrong, he need to pay for it. But these police officers is not the judge, the jury, and the executioner. Apopka got a bad reputation of beating people, especially people of color. Apopka, you remember, we had a Proud Boy right here in Apopka. And this young man, whoever he is, everybody know him by his police number, by his car number. And this is the third time that he'd have whipped this boy. Now, the reason I'm not bringing any video this time because what we're doing, we giving you guys the benefit of the doubt. We gonna see if you're gonna hold this police department accountable. In the past, Mayor, your friend, up under the Joe Kilzheimer, Rod Love, he said that he would pay for diversity training out of his own pocket. The only training that Apopka is getting down on this side of the track is the rogue cops beating on people of color. So I'm asking, either you guys go down there and do something about this, or we're gonna make this a national thing. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Charles Chambers with, I'm actually with the Chamber. Chamber Chambers, there you go. So I'm actually the Chairman of the Board of Directors over here at Apopka Chamber. It's one-eighty East Main Street in Apopka. The Chamber of Commerce is actually advocate for regional businesses, jobs, workforce, and economic opportunities. The Chamber itself represents an average of five hundred businesses over different sectors. These includes cottage businesses, entrepreneurs, consultants, training, nonprofits, specialty retail, nurses, nurseries, restaurants, coffee shops, hotels, banks, churches, top-name hospital systems, and more. The Apopka Area Chamber was established one hundred and eleven years ago in nineteen thirteen. The Chamber has office the current location since the building was built in late seventies and doubled its size in nineteen ninety. A Chamber, Chamber includes award-winning manufacturers, top-recognized developers, large-scale commercials, and residential construction. Previous leaders of the Chambers, Chamber, and its Chamber Board and Directors have advanced their careers in larger business organizations, run, run and won political seats across the state, and also become a manner of expert, experts in their field. We are proudly to serve Apopka area for over one hundred and eleven years and plan to do so for many more. At the end of two thousand twenty-two, between Hurricane Ian and Nicole, the building, it's actually, was severely, severely damaged. We needed to replace the roof. Once that's done, we committed remediation, and we are ready to plan a rebuild. Before committing to the next two hundred thousand dollars to rebuild a city asset, we call, we call it home for fifty years. We are requesting the City Council renew the Chamber lease agreement to ten years with a reoccurring ten years. Or allow us to vacate the building as is, as our lease allows in case of unavoidable casualties, such as hurricanes. Thank you.
Norbert Carrington.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. My name is Norbert Carrington. I serve as the Treasurer for the Apopka Area Chamber of Commerce. I've been a member of the Chamber since June of two thousand twenty-one. During the pandemic, the Chamber, the Chamber acted as a pilot light for local businesses to be aware of funding resources, health protocols, and ideas for businesses to adapt and sustain their businesses. We also wanted the annual membership, we also waived the annual membership dues for nearly a half, one year and a half for our small business members while increasing the number of gatherings in business, in businesses, housing community, hosting community-wide events, cleanups, meet and mingles, mashups, and so much more. All of this to say, in the last three years, the Chamber has spent a little over twelve thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars in our utility bills, over thirty-one thousand nine hundred dollars in our insurance coverage, over a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in leasehold and building repairs. And of that hundred and fourteen thousand, we've spent forty-six thousand dollars to serve pro for the remediation of the mold. And the additional funds were used to repair the roof, to do the demolition and prep the building, to get it ready for the rebuild. In November, after the hurricanes, the Chamber Board Chair and President asked the past City Administrator if the Chamber is responsible for such extensive hurricane damage to the building. And he said, yes, we are. We being the Chamber. They did not review further, but began to move forward with the flood damage testing and protocols as the Chamber has now office in this building for over fifty years without an issue. Having been in the Chamber building for nearly, for nearly half of our one hundred and eleven years in existence, paying our utilities, doing repairs and leasehold to the building, expansions, maintenance, and upkeep, we have not considered relocating from this facility, the Chamber, and/or relocating our services. Until April seventeenth, I guess at the Commission's meeting, when someone started asking about the status of our lease and considering wanting to take the building back, we are asking for the Council to consider a new ten-year lease for the Chamber with a recurring ten years as we prepare to do over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of improvements to reestablish the building and its use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. Welcome, Commissioner Anderson. I'm here today to speak not only as a Apopka business owner, but as a member of the Board of Directors of the Apopka Chamber on behalf of some of the Board of Directors that could not be here today, mostly just to echo what you just heard, but also to tell you how important the Apopka Chamber is, not only to myself, but to local businesses here in Apopka. When myself, my family, and my business partners decided to make the move from Orlando to Apopka to start a business, it was the Apopka Chamber who we first met. They were instrumental in assisting us with, directing us where to go as far as getting our licenses, getting our permits in order. It was the Chamber who set up a meeting with Chief McKinley to discuss the homeless camp that was living behind Propagate. It was the Chamber who has helped us in so many ways to grow and develop our business. So on behalf of myself and all of the other Apopka Chamber business owners, we hope that the great members of this Council will continue to support the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Sylvester Hall, 391 Roland Hills Lane. Another beautiful day in paradise. Commissioner Nesta, congratulations on being reelected. Welcome back. Commissioner Anderson, congratulations on your election. One thing I noticed attending the ceremony, I listened to the oath. And I listened to what Commissioner Smith, his prayer, Vice Mayor, Commissioner Velazquez. I listened to all the things that we say what we should do as we take the oath from office. So, I'm reminding you, it's easy to give lip service and it all sounds so smooth and so pretty coming off your lips. But when it come down to doing the job, we make it very challenging. And it's not challenging because if you look at everything as serving the people, it become a very thankless job. If you remember, you're here to serve the people, serve the public. It become a very thankless job. So remember your oath. And please take that personally. And if you think the job ever becomes too challenging for you, please resign and let somebody else attempt to do the job, or do the job. Because you truly have to love people to serve people. You truly have to love people to serve people, and that's all people. So I'm just reminding you of that. The Apapka Police Department. I haven't seen the video that Mr. Bell is referring to. I'll wait to hold my comments. But over the last two and a half years of me coming to City Council meetings, I'll look over there, see Deputy Chief Miller. Chief McKinley is not there. We have some issues in our police department that need to be addressed. And they're not gonna go away. They only gonna come big, they only gonna get bigger. So I'm asking you not to address this situation, but look at the whole police department as a whole. And where there's changes that need to be made, I'm asking that you make those changes. And one thing I experienced getting out of this car, and I don't mention it a couple of times, I love the guys in blue. I'm a 20 year vet. I love the guys in blue. They have a very dangerous job. When they go home, they don't know whether they coming back. They deserve the very, the very best. Saying that, if you have a bad apple in the bunch, that bunch need to, that bad apple need to be removed before he spores the whole bunch. And that, that needs to take place. And when I walk from my car to here, the heat overwhelms me. We should have a training facilities for our law enforcement yesterday. You guys need to make that happen. It don't need to be put down the road. It need to be happening, it need to happen like yesterday. For the fire, for the fire department, Mayor, here again, we give excellent lip service. There is no reason our fire department shouldn't have a contract. Period. The buck start with you, Mr. Mayor, and it ends with you. There is no reason our fire department should not have a contract. Period. We come up here, we serenade them, but they fighting for a contract. They fighting, you got a hostile environment that has been created by leadership. That needs to change. For the Chamber, I'm with you 100%. We just need better leadership. The DEI?
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Appreciate it. There's no DEI.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, next up, Susan? That's it, okay. Oh, former Mr. Becker.
Good afternoon. Sorry, I was a little late, so I didn't get a chance to. Now, I want to echo the comments. Congratulations for your reelection, Commissioner Nesta, and welcome aboard, Commissioner Anderson. I just wanted to speak directly and set the record straight this, this afternoon in relation to a comment that was brought up during the Mayor's Report, the last meeting. There was reference to the business tax receipts of a number of organizations, one of which was BRPC Consulting LLC, which if anybody wanted to do any research, that's mine. I opened that LLC in late 2021 to do consulting work for my current employer who I'm there full time with. Once I realized the BTR process, I closed that LLC out less than a year after I opened it. So I'm not sure why it was referenced during the Mayor's Report as if there was something nefarious going on with that. What I've entered into the record this afternoon is an email correspondence I had with staff, basically alluding to what I just described, asking them if I owed anything, if I had any outstanding balances, penalties as related to my LLC. And to the contrary, they said, I do not have anything. I won't bring up the, the staff member, but it's on the public record that I just handed into the clerk. The response was, I hope you and your family are well and that the move went smoothly. There is currently no balance for the business that you mentioned. You may have received a letter some time ago stating that you needed to obtain one, but since it was made inactive, no further action was needed and no fees were assessed. So I thought it was another pathetic attempt at a gotcha moment by the Mayor's Report section of the agenda. There's another, there's another component of those comments that was published probably on your meeting minutes, but also reported in the Apapka Voice as it, as it was. I need to verify that the extra. And then number six, I would like to know the excess spending on attorney fees since our inside council was forced to resign. So those are six items I would like to add, and that was referencing the forensic audit. I think the Mayor forgets that he has the ability to appoint internal counsel. That was not done. It was his agenda item that actually put on the agenda for this council to approve the appointment of Mr. Shepherd as our outside counsel to represent the city. So to put that blame or to go forensically audit it, it's kind of pointless because we all know the background behind it. And you have the authority to put in front of this council for ratification. And to that end, I see on the agenda that was republished this week that there is a ratification business item for the new City Administrator. It's my understanding that not all of the City Council members had a chance to meet this individual. And you're being asked to ratify a position today of the person who's gonna manage a staff of over 500 people. I'll go back and, and bring up precedent that the Chair made several years ago as it related to settling a matter related to former City Administrator, Mr. Anderson. And he didn't vote on a topic of settlement because it wasn't part of the published packet that went on on that Friday. And he voted no against that piece of business because he didn't give this council proper opportunity to do, to do diligence. And so for an agenda item to come out after it was published on Friday, and for you to be asked to ratify such an important position within this city, I think it's irresponsible at best. But again, I'm just here to clear my name as it relates to the BTR. I think it's ridiculous and not within a normal scope of work that that would be within a forensic audit when you're looking at the books within the city. But yeah, what, what else do you expect? I intend to quietly leave and, and enjoy my time in Winter Springs. I was hoping to do so until the Mayor's Report happened this last meeting. Hopefully, there's no more gotchas because I've, I've afforded respect to Commissioner Aerosmith and Commissioner Banksen in both seats that I've, I've sat and I've never disparaged their names after the fact. Thank you.
All right. That it? Okay. Next up, we got consent agenda. We have five items. Anybody need to pull any of the five items? Not look for a motion approved?
Zoomo.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second. Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up. Joe, come on down.
I'm not as tall as Mr. Becker, so I had to lower it a little bit. I am here today, I am Joe Patton, Director of Human Resources, Mayor, City Commissioners, and ladies and gentlemen of the audience. I'm here to introduce and request an appointment for our next, hopefully our next City Administrator named Jacob Smith. Just a little background about how we got to here. When the positioning became available or vacant, we did attempt to post this from our own site, which only reaches those individuals that are looking for this position. We did go out to several different job sites to try to find an individual. We posted it twice, however, that ended up with negative results. We did not find anyone. Or those that we, we were vetting did not work, work out. We then went out for bid for a recruiter with more resources to go nationwide in our search for a quality City Administrator. With that bid, Gov HR won that bid. The recruiter that was assigned to us was Jim Denine. Jim has many years of public service experience. Through that process, he interviewed or he vetted 69 applicants. Out of those 69, he interviewed nine applicants. Out of those nine, he referred four applicants to the City of Apapka for consideration. Once those applicants came, we formed a interview committee which consisted of myself, Bradley Williams, and Mr. Maverick. Through that, we sent a recommendation to the Mayor. The Mayor then interviewed all candidates. And throughout that process, we in turn recommend Jacob Smith. Jacob, I know his resume is attached, but I just wanted to bring a couple of things to light. Jacob hails from Farmington, Utah. He has over 18 years' experience in public administration. He has a master's degree in public administration from Northern Illinois University, where he graduated first in his class with a GPA of 4.0. He has a BA degree from Brigham Young University. And with that, I will introduce Jacob Smith to take any of your questions.
Take this one, you want to give us a little more? If you got a little more background, then we'll, we'll open it up for.
Yeah, sure thing. It's nice to meet all of you. I've met some of you yesterday. I love Apapka. Had a chance to go around Apapka quite a bit yesterday and today and the day before when I came in, flew in here from Salt Lake City on Monday. That was a long flight. For some reason, there was some weather going on in Arkansas. Had to go around it. I was, I was kind of hoping you guys were in control of the weather so I could get here a little sooner. But anyways, just to let you know, yeah, I'm, I'm from Farmington. That's where I'm living right now. But I'm actually, I grew up in a blue collar town south of Seattle. My dad was, he was an employee of Boeing. That's where I grew up. I went to school in Utah, like you said. I also went to school in Chicago area, Northern Illinois University. And that was really my introduction to public work. Well, I should say work. Before that, I did do a lot of volunteer work. I worked on committees as well. And that was my introduction to working at the grassroots level with cities. And it was something that I loved. At that time, I was a marketing manager for an IT company. And I just couldn't find the motivation to try to sell people something that I didn't feel like they really needed. And it was at that time kind of a soul searching thing. Well, what can I do? I was at a banquet and one of my friends got up to speak and she talked about how she was going to get her master's in public administration. Never heard of it. You know, but that, that intrigued me. And she was planning to go into the nonprofit sector. So I decided to check it out as well. And I noticed that you could actually work for a city at a professional level, receive this training so that way you could help cities become more efficient, more effective, you know, smart growth. That, that intrigued me. So I did some more research on that. Decided to go to an excellent school that emphasized urban management for cities, and that's Northern Illinois University. Now, that's, that's in the Chicagoland area. And believe it or not, there's over 1,000 different forms of government inside that Chicago area. Special District, cities, villages, counties, townships, you name it. So I thought it was a great place to go and be introduced to that. Did an internship the whole time that I was there getting my masters. And as a compromise with my wife at that time, who was from Idaho, which is way too rural for me and not a whole lot there, we decided to move to the Salt Lake area where I was able to get a position with the second fastest growing city in the nation at that time, Saratoga Springs, Utah. And I worked there until the Great Recession. It was, I'm sure you guys felt a little bit of the pain, but it was hit pretty hard by that Great Recession. We had quite a few developments that went bankrupt and there's still some empty space out there where they have some infrastructure, the streets and the water lines with no homes. So it's kind of a sad situation. It's starting to recover now. But I was fortunate enough at that time that Governor Huntsman was hiring for his, his office, somebody that could take over policy and budget for an area that became a huge need. And that was workforce services, commerce, and labor. So I was assigned over those agencies and managed a little bit over a billion dollar budget with them. I was, I was the spokesperson for the governor to the legislature and to these agencies, kind of that middleman. That, that's what I did primarily when I was there. But of course, local government, grassroots is still, that, that's my thing. That's what I always wanted to do. Because I really, I really want to affect in a good way my neighbors, the people that live around me, the people I care about. I want to see that I'm, I'm making an impact. Some, something for good. So I went into my city manager that was there and let him know, hey, I'm here. I have this degree and training. I was gonna go back into doing what I was doing before, volunteer committees. And he actually offered me a job instead as his assistant. And that's where I worked for 12 years, 11, almost 12 years. I was promoted several times. I was made the Finance Director. That was my primary areas of emphasis there was finance, budget, economic development, and human resources. I also worked on quite a few of other projects, but I was always number two as part of the executive team. Lot of strategic planning. It too, the name of the town was Centerville. It too was going through a lot of growth. And it was about 50/50 between the commercial and the residential. And I worked more primarily on the commercial development. So I brought in some of the big boxes, Walmart, Home Depot, Target, helped to help on the revenue side with, with the sales tax instead of emphasizing the property tax as much. I also was involved with quite a few of the public works activities that were related to the residential impact. So I did that for quite a while. And then there was an opportunity to, to work for Fruit Heights, which is a town, couple, couple towns up. It's actually the next town up north from where I live, in Farmington. Their City Manager, two weeks' notice, retired. They needed somebody quick. I was there. I actually worked both places at the same time at Oprah Lap for about four weeks, which was brutal, 80 hour weeks. I'm sure you guys understand that, you're commissioners. But yeah, I did that for a while as the City Manager. And while I was there at Fruit Heights, you know, I, I did discover some issues that by my opinion, I'm not, I'm not legal. But some things, there were some legal issues. There were some ethical issues. There were some practices that were just, just terrible in my eye. They didn't, I like to call it the sniff test. There's a lot of things that were not passing the sniff test. You know, if, if press understood some of these things that were going on, it'd be headline news. So it was difficult for me because I tried to implement some changes, and I did. But I ruffled some feathers. And so I only worked there for about six months because I did not give in all my ethics. And I was honest in all that I did. And, and quite frankly, I want to work for someplace where I can continue to be that way. And, and quite frankly, where, where it's expected. Because for all of you that are here, to me, a city is not the staff in this building. To me, the city is all of you. And these Commissioners here and the Mayor represent you. You're, they're your voice. So everyone who decides to live within this geographical boundary, you collectively have decided this is the way you want to govern. And it's. And so when I come here, I don't just see commissioners and the mayor, but I see all of you. And I'm a tender-hearted guy. I love all people. I love everybody. I love my neighbors. And so that's why I'm here. I serve. And that was one of the things when I came in here that I wanted to make sure was, one, if I like the people here, that's the first thing, and two, if I can be honest and ethical. And I've done that. I have actually been very impressed. You are people of great faith. That I have noticed, and I have felt it. Everybody has been very warm, kind, down-to-earth, and straightforward. And that's how I am too. So that's a little bit about me. I am married. I have four of my own kids and three stepkids. Luckily, most of them are out of the house now, so I've survived the, most of the teenage age, so that's where these hairs came from. Really, it didn't come from work, that came from my teenagers. So with that, you know, I can answer any questions that you guys might have.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson, you want to start us out?
I don't have any questions. I actually met with you yesterday. We talked for probably an hour and a half, and I was very impressed with your background, the things you've done in the past. And I actually don't have any questions. I asked all the questions yesterday, so I don't have any questions.
Great, thank you, and welcome. Congratulations.
Mr. Vazquez.
Well, the same thing. We kind of, initially I had sent out an email, and I guess you responded. I didn't send it to you, I sent it to our interim. And he did call me, and we made arrangements, and I did come back. It was a busy day yesterday, but I think we spent some time in the lunchroom. It was very informal. We did go over so much of what the city is about, and, you know, what are you bringing to the table. And so I have to say this, because, you know, social media, it's been kind of running around, and you said the same thing. You know, there were discussions about, you know, you being out of state, you know, how does he, you know, how is he going to come into Apopka if he doesn't know Apopka? But I will have to say this. We hired a headhunter to go out and look for the best candidate. And you rose to the top. I mean, there were four, I don't know what happened with the other three, but you rose to the top, and you came in, and you sat down, and you spoke to each of us, and I read your resume. And one of the things that really hit me is because of, that's what I was looking for myself, was moreover, my belief in honesty, ethics, and the golden rule shapes my decision-making process, guiding me to always prioritize integrity and fairness. My relentless drive as an achiever fuels my focus and dedication, ensuring that I consistently deliver excellence in all endeavors. And those are, what I was looking for, integrity, fairness, and that you are available, not just to us, here as the commission, to the staff, and to our regular public, that if they want to come in and kind of discuss something with you, something that they feel is of concern, I want to be able to know that they have that accessibility. And we did talk about that, and I was very comfortable that, and you even saying it right now, that it's not, you're not just serving us, that you are actually serving the residents. I thank you. And the only thing was that, you know, we don't have, we haven't seen the contract, but I understand that it's kind of similar to what Ed Bass had. There were some additions, and they did tell me what the additions were. I guess, you know, at some point, our attorney will look it over, but I was satisfied with the additions that will be added to that contract. So thank you for spending as much time as you did with me yesterday, and certainly, I was very impressed with your resume.
Thank you, appreciate it. And we're not done. You have quite a history. I want to learn more. I'm intrigued. You're an interesting person.
Mr. Smith.
I don't have any questions either. I met with him yesterday, and we do have some control over the weather, that's why I'm stranded on Monday.
Oh, thanks.
But yes, I was impressed with the interview I had with you yesterday as well. And the thing that struck me most, just as Commissioner Velazquez said, is your honesty. And when you talked about the things that you saw that was not done properly in your previous employment, and you was willing to stand, that made a difference with me. And so I'm here.
Thank you.
Mr. Nesta.
Yeah, no, so this is obviously very rushed, and I think we know that upfront. You know, I'd came into my meeting, and unfortunately, you weren't there. I know there was a travel issue, but again, anything that's rushed, I always tend to take a step back and say, why are we rushing this? With less than 48 hours on the agenda, just leads me to question things, not you by any means, but just the process in general. And I would ask any of my commissioners, how much is he getting paid?
Well, the contract is...
No, I'm asking you guys. I'm asking, how much is he getting paid?
One said.
How do you know that?
I asked.
To who?
I asked the city administrator.
When I asked, you guys said there was no numbers, this is not, nothing's been negotiated, was what was...
It was worked on.
So there's new information that I didn't get that other people got? Mr. Smith, this is in...
Yeah, no, I get it. Just my input, there was, there was a range that was put on the job app, and I'm assuming that you guys all saw that job and approved that that went out?
Sure. Nobody saw the contract, nobody knows what's actually in it. You said there is, Commissioner Velazquez said there's added additions. No clue what those are.
Well, they... I would let...
What was changed from Edwards' contract to this one, and it's got to have the approval of the labor attorney, was when Mr. Smith's evaluation comes up, that it would be a combination of all five of y'all evaluating his performance to get to the score. And that was to allow you all to have some input as to how he was being and performing on his, in his office. So...
None of this is in writing right now.
We have a contract, but it's got to be reviewed and approved by the labor attorney.
Has anybody, have you guys seen this contract? Have you reviewed it in any capacity?
Well, we heard that it's the same contract as Ed Bass, so I have seen that.
With additions, so you haven't seen this contract?
The only addition is the one...
The addition was to allow you all to have some input into the evaluation on his annual performance.
You haven't seen this contract. But we're approving a contract we haven't seen, we don't know the exact number, we've talked about it, but we don't see it on writing. My point is fiscally, if we're going to be budgeting and creating a line item for our budget for this, we need to know exactly what it is. Fiscally for us, we need to have our residents be confident in what we are making decisions on. And if we haven't seen, if we don't know exactly what the terms are of a contract, then how can we approve that right now or ratify it in any capacity? I'm not saying no, I'm just saying not this week. That would be my ask. I'm happy to listen to, if the public's comfortable with it, I'm their voice. If they're comfortable with it, great, let's keep moving. But if they're not, I would, once public comment's done, I will move to table this until the next meeting so that we can officially meet. And we can do Zoom, we can do a call. I've got lots of questions, and by no means do I want to do it online. Offline for us and have some just deep dives.
Is the contract available now for us to review?
It's still to be reviewed by the labor attorney prior to draft.
Okay, so once reviewed by the labor attorney and approved, then that will receive that same contract. So a draft is available for us to review now? A draft is available now to review?
He has a draft, but we have to meet with the labor attorney.
Before we can actually, physically, okay.
Well, I'd like to hear from our residents.
Okay. So just for the record, so the only commissioner you have not sat with is Commissioner Nesta?
Yes.
Okay. So in all fairness, what he's asking is to have the same opportunity as it was given to each of us.
Correct, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's fair, because we're working together. Let's make sure we're all on the same page. Again, this is not a you. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page on multiple factors, similar to what every other commissioner was granted.
Well, let's listen in public, and then we'll bring it back to the council. Anybody want to speak?
First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Nesta for doing his due diligence, because this administration have a track record of setting its terms to get its results. It's been several times, over and over again, not speaking against this gentleman, because I don't even know him. But this administration, even his salary, he snuck it in on a vote. Even the money that was moved over to the bank was sneaked in on a consent agenda. We need to do the due diligence. If we had have did this with the chief, with the fire chief, and everything, we wouldn't be having the problem we have it. And this way, if we can do our due diligence, and we need to get rid of the sambonism, and Sylvester Hall, in echo, and what I said up here earlier, by oath, what I always say about ethics matters, principles matters, integrity matters, character matters, laws matters, rules matters, all these things matters. And I'm looking at the process right here, and I just say, hey, look, it's time for us to stop giving lip service. Mr. Smith, I can hold you accountable, because I don't know how much you know, but I'm going to hold you accountable for this episode right here. I'm going to see how you deal with the situation. Because if you are a man of integrity, honesty, what just happened shouldn't happen. That's chaos. And you're going to lead an organization of so many employees, they have to know that you have integrity, you have character, and you're not bought and sold. And I'm going to say it loud and clear, we got too many people are bought and sold. Too many people that serve on this administration is bought and sold. And they being rewarded for their loyalty, which put the community in danger. I'm going to say it again, so all y'all understand it. Too many people on this administration are bought and sold. They being rewarded for their loyalty, which put the community at danger and at risk. You have history of running an organization, you know exactly the impacts of my word I just said. Because those words create a hostile environment. And I tell you, things are brewing, and incidents will occur, I just pray that nobody else lose their life. This should never happen. We're ready to just sign, seal, deliver, and nobody has seen the contract. That's one-on-one. It's not a rocket scientist. Nobody has seen the contract. And then Commissioner Nesta haven't had the opportunity to really sit down one-on-one with the young man. I say young because I'm 62. This shouldn't happen. This shouldn't happen. Mayor, every day you get up, you have a choice to do better. You have the choice to do the same? That choice is yours, Mr. Mayor. I pray to God that he touch your soul and your heart, and let you understand, you're here to serve people. I said before, which we get, the minutes mixed up. I said, God tells me to love you, therefore I love you. But I said, you also have a wicked heart that God says you need to change. That was left out of the minutes. It was only said that Sylvester said he loved the mayor. See how we changed the whole situation, we're just leaving a few words out. We're in the 21st century. The technology to record minutes from everybody who come up here, that should be elementary. And if we can't do the job, we need to get somebody else to do the job. If she's been told to put that in there, we need to find out, and it needs to stop. It's just as simple as that. It's not rocket science to get the minutes right. We have the technology to do that. So I say to you again, take your oath seriously, because everything that's done in the dark, eventually one day is going to rise to the light, and you're going to have to answer for that.
Albert McKimme, 3603 Golden Jam Road. This city is built on protocols and policies. If we invite Jacob here to join us now without observing those protocols and policies, what are we actually instilling into them that they don't matter? This week, we have a situation with a sinkhole. We had one of our commissioners, Commissioner Nesta, reported that the sinkhole hadn't been secured, and that people's lives were in danger, they could walk into the facility because there was a gate unlocked. Commissioner Nesta on Sunday sent that information to the city. This is Wednesday. I gave you photographs in there today that shows the gate is still open, and lives are still being put at risk, because this city refuses to follow protocol and policies that
Rod Olson, 3156 Orling Hills Lane, Apopka. Two things we talked about earlier today, I talked about infrastructure and proper protocols with regard to that. The other thing is when we were doing the charter review, I'd indicated that whether or not we have a strong manager or have a strong mayor type of government made no difference, that I think that this position, as well as the other positions identified before, the chief financial officer, should all be approved by this group as a whole, not any one individual. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public hearing.
So I just, I just have to say this. I was unaware that Nick Nesta had not been interviewed, or you had spent time with him. And one of the things I really wanted to kind of make clear to our audiences, until we come up here, we don't know who has conversed with whom. Because I can't go to him and say, oh, did you get to speak to the new applicant? Just like I can't, just don't ask. I spoke with you. I happen to know that the newly-elected commissioner was in the building, because after me, you had to go speak with her. So I knew that you would see her, but I was unaware about Nick Nesta. So out of respect, that he has not had that opportunity as each of us have, then I agree that maybe we should table this until he has the same opportunity that was given to each of us. As far as the contract, I've been here a while, so I did, I have seen Edward Bass's contract. So when they said it was the same with the addition, it's not my place to say what the additions were. And Mr. Vavrik did say what the additions were, and I was in agreeance with that, that evaluations should be done with each of us, having the opportunity to evaluate our chief administrator, it should not be just one person. Past experiences of what we had encountered with our former attorney has really brought to light some changes that we need to do, so that our commission, because we're equally all elected by the people, no one person up here has more power than the other one. Our mayor and the chair runs the day-to-day operations, he deals with the staff, and that's rightfully so. But I feel anything else that has to do with the business of the city, we should all have some kind of say into the input and how things run in the city. So that's what I have to say. So out of respect that you have not had that opportunity, I agree that we should table this, so that you get the opportunity, and you get to ask the questions, to make you feel comfortable if he is the right candidate.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Let me, let me go back, just to kind of clear the air on how we got to here. So I was waiting, was hoping to have had all, I was doing the background on Mr. Smith, and one of the things, as we talked about, you know, he freely admitted, he left the job for reasons of what he saw as ethics issues. And so I needed some confirmation from somebody other than him that that was really the case. And so I didn't get that call until Sunday evening. So Sunday evening, I called Mr. Smith, said, hey, listen, there is a flight, a Spirit Flight, 6:00 AM flight, that would get him here at noon, that would make both Commissioner Nesta's meeting and who was, who's on Monday, Smith's meeting. Nestor's meeting, and who was, who's on Monday, Smith's meeting, which obviously, he didn't get that flight, he had to get a Delta flight, got caught up on the tarmac, and didn't get here until five o'clock, right at five o'clock. So, I will take full blame for his not getting here, you know, I guess I should have booked, didn't know there was that short on flights, or seats on that Spirit Flight, but anyway. So I will take complete credit, and, but, you know, I want you guys to feel comfortable that this is, he's the right guy. But I do, I want to go back to a couple of things that, you know, Joe, as he brought up, you know, we had 64, when the 64 candidates?
69.
69 candidates that actually applied for it. And so, that was a process that Jim Denine, without any, I don't think, did even get with you, either you Chuck, or Radley, as to pairing it down to the eight or nine?
Mr. Denine paired it down.
Okay, so he paired it down, and then he paired it to the four, which, at that point, he alone not, I had nothing to do with that. So then we got to the four, is then when the three of y'all were interviewed, all four of those, the candidates. So is that, just, you know, just for the record, so okay. So with that being said, I mean, I don't, I think that, you know, I think if, if Commissioner Nestor, I know that he will be here until, your flight's five, four, five o'clock tomorrow, so Jacob will leave till tomorrow afternoon, but I completely understand, I know that he probably couldn't get here, you know, school year's about to come up, so I don't know that that's a big issue, that we wait till next Commission meeting. I would just, I would just ask if, if that's the case, that he could, if he needs to do it, do it by Zoom, that we don't need to fly him back down. But I'm happy, I'm more than happy to do that, but I just wanted to kind of give you the timeline as to how we got to here. It's, it's been a process, you know, we put a lot of effort, Jim has put a lot of effort into getting us candidates, and, so three of the four were not even in the state, so, so it was, yeah, it was a, it was a wide reach of candidates. So, anyway, if that's, hopefully, he can, he can, maybe after this meeting, get with Commissioner Nestor, and set up sometime between now and when he leaves, to go back to the airport, and then, if you'd like, look for a motion to table till the next Commission meeting.
Yeah.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nestor?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, business item, crossroads at Kelly Park, plat.
Good afternoon, Jean Sanchez with the Community Development Department. This is a request to approve the crossroads at Kelly Park, phases 1-2, 1-3, and 2 plat. The subject property is located at 4510 Onich Road, on the southeast corner of Onich and Round Lake Road, approximately 150 acres in size. The plat proposes to create stormwater tracks, roads, and other infrastructure to support the previously-approved projected expansion of the crossroads at Kelly Park development in the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code area. The plat is consistent with all crossroads at Kelly Park faces approved by the City Council, and the corresponding master plan, master infrastructure construction site plan approved by the Development Review Committee on September 6, 2023. The DRC recommends approval at its meeting on April 9, 2024. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this plat. The recommended motion is to approve the crossroads at Kelly Park, phases 1-2, 1-3, and 2 plat. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Any questions for Jean? Anybody from the public wish to speak?
Yeah, is that part of the KPI, this?
Yes, ma'am, this is the one north of Kelly Park Road. It's one of the first ones that came into the KPI. It used to be called, it was part of the DRI previously.
The entrance road's in there, Commissioner, you probably see it, it's just west of Golden Jam on the north side.
Okay.
It's the big development on the north side.
It's the big development on the north side of Kelly Park, just west of Golden Jam.
This is the one that touches Onich Road?
Onich, yeah.
Mm-hmm. It starts from Kelly Park, and goes all the way north to Onich.
Okay, there it is.
Okay, any other questions? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve the plat for the crossroads at Kelly Park, phase 1-2, 1-3, and 2.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nestor?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, land purchase south of Boy Scout Road for the 429 access ramp project.
Community Development Director Jim Hitt. This is a, it's land purchase for areas south of Boy Scout Road, for the State Road 429 Access Ramp Project. This is an additional access ramp that has been planned and designed for the 429 by the Central Florida Expressway, which is CFX, at the intersection of the 429, South Binion Road, and also Boy Scout Road. This is directly north, or west of the Ridge product, or Ridge Development. In order to complete this project, the City of Apopka does need to require, acquire the 2.79 acre parcel to the north, to the southeast corner of Boy Scout Road, to align Boy Scout Road a little bit farther to the north with the cul-de-sac. That'll provide access to the property owners along that northern portion of Boy Scout Road itself. The new section of road will be owned by the City of Apopka, and will also include roundabout at the intersection, that will also improve traffic circulation, similar to that at the 441, or 451 ramp at Martin Road. The ramps going onto State Road 429 will be a northbound on-ramp, and a southbound off-ramp. Access and utility easements will also be provided to the two parcels to the south, which have already gone through approvals. The western side is, I'm looking for the pointer here, western side is already, this portion here, that's a commercial node, and then this is a multifamily node, and then, of course, the rest of this is single-family and townhomes over here. An appraisal report has been completed, this was done by the Barfield Group, and was provided as Exhibit C in your packet. The appraisal came in at $711,000, which is the proposed acquisition price. In addition, we are requesting an additional $14,000 to be required to cover costs such as title insurance, recording, courier document stamps, and warranty deed. The transportation impact fees are to be used for, for the purchase of this new roadway acquisition, and the realignment of Boy Scout Road. The roundabout and the CFX ramp itself project will increase the capacity to the road system, and the total, so the total requested purchase price is $725,000. A budget amendment will be following up at the next meeting, to assign the funds for this actual project itself. So the request is to approve vacant land contract for $725,000 for the acquisition of the 2.79 acres, for the realignment of Boy Scout Road, and the State Road 429 Access Ramp Project.
Any questions for Jim?
These are the two parcels.
2.79?
2.79, yes, it's in the packet.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, these are the sketches, I don't believe they could put the two portions on one piece of paper, or one piece of paper, so they divided it into the two different sketches. But that's the overall project itself.
Any other questions for Jim? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Let's just hold it just for a sec, we'll get Commissioner Nestor to get back.
In case you were wondering, when these, when the two developments came in, on the south side, they did take into account the, this access ramp, the design was already done by CFX, so they, they're okay with the, with the project itself, they were, offered a lot of assistance with actually putting this together.
I tell you, it's, you know, it's a testament, the team, we were able to, you know, we asked, you know, CFX about this access, and, so they've agreed to do the whole interchange, and it probably, I'm gonna say a 15 to 20 million dollar investment by CFX that will benefit us, so it's a pretty, pretty amazing, you know, return on investment.
It helps quite a bit with the traffic circulation of the 429 and 451 intersection areas, so this is, this is a huge one.
So this connection will go from where? It'll connect to?
The, the, I'm gonna, I'm gonna point here, so this is the new alignment for Boy Scout Road itself.
Right.
And then, of course, this is Binion Road, so there's gonna be a roundabout here, this will be an on-ramp going north, and then this is an off-ramp coming south.
And then it'll connect to?
Just right here, that connects right into the 429, so you can go all the way up to Kelly Park, and go shopping at the new Publix at, at the KPI, or you can go south to wherever that may go.
Disney.
Disney, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Okay, look for a motion to approve the land purchase for the property south of Boy Scout Road for the 429 Access Ramp Project.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, joint use agreement, City of Apopka School Board.
Radley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director, good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Before you today, we have for consideration and approval, joint use agreement between the City of Apopka and Orange County School Board. The City of Apopka has a strong standing relationship with the Orange County Public School System, and views the schools located in and surrounding Apopka as a vital piece of the community. This joint use agreement is to allow for city recreation programming to run on school board property, and in return, to continue to allow school board athletics to utilize some of our park facilities. As part of the agreement, the City and Orange County School Board commit to ensure no charges or additional fees will be charged to either party for this use, as identified to the locations in Exhibit A. And one thing that we, we worked with the school board on for this agreement, was to not be as specific with the actual facilities that were in the agreement, but rather, highlight the parks that they'd have available access to, and they highlight the schools that we'd have available access to. So in Exhibit A, it highlights that we would have access to facilities at Apopka High School, Apopka Memorial Middle School, Kelly Park School, Wakava High School, Wolf Lake Elementary, and Wolf Lake Middle School. The school board for the athletic programs would have access to our Apopka Amphitheater, Apopka Athletic Complex, Camp Weewah, and Northwest Recreation Complex. That gives us the flexibility to work with the principals, and with the athletic directors, to determine the needs that we have at the varying seasons of the year. We've worked many, many months with the school board through this process, and we're excited to have this agreement ready for your consideration and approval, and I'm here to take any questions.
I know that we spoke yesterday, and then when I went home, I said, oh, you know, I have to ask him this, because every year, Miss Apopka, we use the high school, and it was done with disagreement. It, will that continue to include the Miss Apopka?
Correct, so it'll be for any C function or program that we have in our department. So it would cover that, yes.
Any other questions for Radley? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Not, we'll close the public hearing, just want to say, real quick, that we really appreciate school board member Bird really working hard to get this thing over the finish line, so we got another couple of projects coming up, that we hope to be bringing forward to City Council here, that will also include OCPS. So it's great to have a good relationship with our school board, and so we look forward to continuing that, that relationship. So with that, I look for a motion to-
Just one question, what was the term of that?
It's an initial five-year term, with three available five-year renewals. Those would be automatic renewals unless, unless either side came back with any adjustments to propose.
Five years, and that needs-
So a total of 20 years, maximum term.
Oh, okay.
Five-year initial, and then three additional five-year renewals.
And three additional. Okay.
Okay, look for a motion to approve the joint use agreement between the City of Apopka and the School Board of Barnes County.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up, ordinance number 3049.
Ordinance number 3049, an ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits, to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated in being in Orange County, Florida, owned by James H. Page Life Estate, and the Annette H. Page Trust, located north of West Keene Road, and west of east, west and east of Martin Road, comprising 32 acres, more or less, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and ineffective date.
Good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager. Request is to annex parcels totaling 32 acres into the City of Apopka. Properties are located north of West Keene Road, and west and east of Martin Road. Parcels are contiguous to the city limits, and therefore eligible for annexation pursuant to Florida Chapter 171.044. Assignment of a city future land use and zoning designation will occur at a later date through the action of the City Council. The Development Review Committee recommends approval. Recommended motion this afternoon is to accept first reading for ordinance number 3049, hold it over for second reading and adoption on May 15. Myself and the applicant are available for questions.
Okay, any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for motion to approve ordinance number 3049 at first reading, and hold over for a second reading and adoption.
Okay.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nestor?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, City Council reports.
Well, do we go, after this, do we get to go for the executive session?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna close out the complete council meeting, and then we'll go into the special.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's because it's, it's a labor agreement, it's different than if it were a settlement agreement.
Oh, okay.
So, why don't we start out with A for Apple, or A for Anderson, our newest elected member of the council?
So first and foremost, I just want to say thank you all for, to the community, for believing in me, and actually elected me as your Commissioner. It was a journey, I look forward to serving you all with integrity, honesty, just understand every decision and choice I make, it is definitely is gonna be for the best interest of everyone in the community. I'm new, so take every mistake with love, but just understand that everything I do, and every decision I make, and every vote I make, is based off of whatever facts that are given to me, and all the research I do, and I'm just excited to be here, I look forward to bringing all my experience, serving the community, I will continue to serve, now, on a different capacity, but I look forward to meeting everyone. There's a lot of things that I want to, you know, implement and do in the community, the next few meetings, you'll probably hear more about my vision. I look forward to serving, and thank you all for believing in me, and I look forward to representing you all. One thing I want to bring up is that I have been receiving a lot of reports from different firefighters, that actually resigned from the department. I hear you, I'm reading your reports, I'm sure your concerns, I will have a meeting with the chief, and kind of figure out what that looks like, I am new, but understand, I do hear your concerns. In regards to some of the comments regarding a video, I guess that is circulating, regarding some, I guess, some excessive use from an officer, I will be reviewing that video. Next meeting, I will address in regards to kind of my concerns, or if there were any concerns in regards to that. I have served in that capacity as a probation officer in social services, so I have seen firsthand just different things, so I have a perspective in regards to that. So I look forward to looking at that video, and addressing some of the public concerns in regards to that. Some other thing is in regards to, and I know we already talked about, the potential new city administrator, I was not aware as well that Nick, Commissioner Nestor did not meet with him, so I do think it's extremely fair, that he's given an opportunity to actually meet as well. So, that is all for my short report, but once again, I look forward to serving you all, thank you.
Glad to have you on board. All right, Mr. Velazquez?
Okay, well first, I mean, this is the executive meeting, we did have the National Firefighters Foundation, this weekend, they'll be hosting the 43rd National Fallen Memorial, which is this weekend, Saturday, May 4th and May 5th, and that'll be in Emmensburg, Maryland. Saturday, May 4th and May 5th, and that'll be in Emmensburg, Maryland. And sadly, there's more than, I think, 200 names that are going, but seven of the firefighters are from here in Florida, and of course, the one firefighter from Apopka, Austin Duran, who was an EMT firefighter, 25 years old. As we know, that he was tragically injured on June 30th, 2022, and he died from his injuries on July 15th. And just want to make mention, since he is one of our firefighters, and it is something that we are still dealing with and trying to get some resolvement for the family. And of course, there's been a lot of changes in our fire department during procedures and training because of this line of duty death. The only thing is that this weekend, it is that President Biden has asked for the flags to be flown and have staff to honor all the fallen firefighters. So I'm hoping that we can do that this weekend in honor of our firefighter, Austin Duran, and his family. Mr. Sylvester Hall did make mention of the DEI, and I will have to say this. It was on my commissioner's report from the last council meeting, but we didn't get a chance to do so. We've had this DEI committee, and it really has not been functioning as a committee. You know, the last few events, you know, it said we had the DEI hosting, but there was only two people hosting from the DEI group, and that, of course, is, you know, Mr. Mark Wright, who is the resident, and he has done so much for us, and Stephen Krip. And I have to apologize because I don't think any of us, I still don't know what is his title, Stephen Krip.
Of course, Joe's already left. They changed the?
Yeah, they changed it.
Yeah, I don't know what his? Yeah, I don't know what his?
What was it previously?
I don't, yeah.
Special projects or?
Special project. Well, the only thing I'm going to ask is that we do disband the DEI group and start over again, now that we have a, you know, newly elected commissioner, only because, of course, the resident that I had appointed, her concerns have been over the last few events that have taken place and that have been announced that the DEI group was involved. She personally has not been involved. And I believe, I see Mr. Hall has left, but he also has expressed that he has not been involved. So I think it would be only fair that we disband the current group that's in place because they have not met. I think they met once or twice, and since then, we've only had two active members, and one of them has been our, the employee, and Mr. Mark Wright, who has been very involved, but not the rest of the DEI group, and I think we need to start again.
And I'll have to defer to the mayor. The mayor is the CEO, makes that final choice, but that's the wishes of the mayor and how we proceed. We can also go back and look at it, maybe draft a resolution as to do some procedural.
I think that would be appropriate because even I reached out to another member of the DEI group who doesn't even, he's no longer in Apopka, and he left, and he said he has not been involved at all.
I'll consult with the mayor. We'll come up with something.
Well, no, I can just add real quick to that. If we, I don't want to dismantle it, but if we can just formalize the process a little bit more similar to what you're saying.
Let's come up with a resolution and a formal way of operating it and how the members are selected and so forth, and put it into?
Solidify it.
Yeah, it's going to be my same request because I was the one who requested the DEI committee, so I don't want to see it disbanded, but just restructure so that they're functioning.
Okay, maybe I'm using?
We will bring any resolution to be adopted and accepted back to the council.
Absolutely. And it would be fair for our new commissioner to be able to select someone within the community that she feels would contribute to?
I'll work with the mayor, and we'll come up with something.
Let me see. It was, well, of course, we, you know, since the last council meeting till now, we've had all kinds of events. Certainly, sitting on the Kiwanis Board, we just had the recent banquet at the Apopka Community Center, so it was very well-attended, very successful. Of course, we had the swearing-in yesterday, which was super well-attended by the families, friends, and everybody who was involved with Commissioner Anderson's election. And let me see, what else we have here? And I apologize because I kind of wrote everything really quick. Oh, we have the annual Armando Borja's Golf Tournament that's coming up May 11th, and of course, May 12th, which is Mother's Day. So let me just kind of extend to all the moms and all the ladies in the city, in our city hall, our city staff, and a happy Mother's Day, because the next time we come, it'll be after Mother's Day. So I'm wishing all the women out there who are moms to actually pause cats and everything and children and just a happy Mother's Day. So thank you. And that's pretty much it for now. So thank you.
Mr. Smith?
All right. I just want to congratulate Commissioner Anderson in her first meeting, and Commissioner Nesta, his return to the dais. Also, that today is the first day of Asian-American Pacific hour in the month for that celebration. And looking forward to the mayor's prayer breakfast on tomorrow and at noon time for the day of prayer here on the steps of Cedar Hall. It was my first time hearing about the video as well. That's something that we will look into also, and I think it was very well-received, the presentation in reference to the sinkhole or the mine shaft, whatever they want to call it. So to give us a better understanding as to what took place and how we need to move forward in order to get that resolved. There's one other thing, I can't find it. All right, that's it.
Mr. Nesta?
Absolutely. Want to welcome Commissioner Anderson. Great first meeting. Welcome aboard, and I look forward to working with you and hearing about your goals and aspirations. Look forward to that. So bring them on. I just want to reiterate, definitely not dismantling DEI. Want to just, if anything, add more people to it. Again, formalize the process, but not dismantle, add to it. I think the bigger the better on that one. Mr. Hit, this one was for you on X, and I should have asked it Monday. In reference to surplus property, is there, I know that we were going through that process at one point. Are we, have we made any strides there, or what does that look like moving forward for us?
One of the issues that we had was getting a, we have to get three property appraisers online. Actually, in the process, we did find out that Duke Energy has a piece of property that's available to purchase, so we're getting an appraisal put on that property. I've got two other properties that I've sent over to the appraiser to see, the one that I've got, we're kind of limited at $5,000. So the Duke Energy properties, $2,000, so I got $3,000 to try to get at least one of those properties done, and he hasn't gotten back to me yet in regards to the, how much it'll cost to get that. I've already let him know we've got $2,999 to work with, and so I'm hoping that he comes through with at least one of those at the $3,000 or that $299,99, you know, price to be able to get the, you know, that appraisal.
Do we need to? Add more funds to something or help in that regards to, because there's a couple of surplus properties that have been discussed and things like that, and would that be helpful?
Well, I've got, I've got two other properties that we were authorized through the City Council and the CRA to consider for disposal. So those are the properties that we were looking at to see about getting the appraisal. The appraisal price, one of the issues that came up with, we used to do this as a, oh, boy, I'm trying to remember the term, but we were allowed to be, in the past, we were allowed to utilize one firm to?
Soul source.
Soul source, thank you. And that process changed about a year ago, where we can't just do soul source, we actually have to get three prices. The hard part with appraising is that it's not just hourly, but it's also the type of research that has to be done to get that property. So you can't, it's virtually impossible to get a, unless you go out to bid for every single property for three different properties. I did contact Orange County to see what they do. Of course, they have their own onsite appraiser, on-staff appraisal people, but they also have a couple of other contracts, but they aren't piggybackable. So the question was, can Orange County grant that piggyback? And I was told at this stage that they can't at this stage. They have to get another contract that's piggybackable, and they didn't want to bring that to the county commission to do. So I've got to contact a couple of other cities and see, you know, that are local and see who they use and if they're, if I can do a piggyback contract. One of the other issues that came up with the appraisal, appraisers themselves, is that the one that we had been using, Danny Dolger, had been extremely responsive. We could get an appraiser, an appraisal done probably two to three weeks. The majority of the appraisers that are out there right now are taking two, three months at least to get the appraisals because they're so busy. So that was one of the other issues that came up.
Okay.
So there's a handful of issues that, you know, in order to get the appraisals done, but I'm hoping that I can get at least one more piece.
At this point, if you were to put that out to bid, and the appraiser that we do use bids for it, when you sit with the committee, I mean, that's how you determine the time that they at least cement their appraisals, right?
If we go out to bid for a, this is each piece of property would almost have to be bid at that stage. And that's cumbersome. I mean, you're out for a 30-day bid.
They change the process here?
Yes.
Under what ordinance was that change a resolution?
It wasn't an ordinance. It was?
It was?
And Blanche is working on making some changes to that. That was the one we've talked about up and from the 5,000 and upping that level, if you remember, and also going from the 50 and moving that 50 up to 100,000. So she's working on that, and we will be coming back to you all to make those modifications. It's just everything's costing so much now that we're going to have to change the policy so we can be more flexible.
That in itself will help. Last year, year before last, we did probably about eight or nine appraisals, and they raged anywhere from 2,000 up to, I think the most expensive one was around 5,200. So if we can get that raised, like Chuck mentioned, that in itself will help.
Okay. That's definitely something to look into there. Thank you. Appreciate it. You have a question? You can ask, if we're going to stay on this topic, go ahead.
Oh, no, no.
No, okay, no, I got a couple more things, sorry. We, I assume everyone got the email for the RFP that went out for the forensic audit? Did everyone get that?
Yes.
Did everyone review it? If you didn't review it, that's okay. I did review it, and it's very messy, very sloppy, and I just want to know, I mean, it's unfortunate that Mrs. Sherman is not here, but who, I guess, authorized that to go out in the capacity that it was?
It goes through Ms. Sherman's office, and she's responsible for purchasing and allows it to go out.
So she was the final say on that, that decided that goes out in the capacity?
She consulted with me, and as we were trying to get you actively involved for a clear understanding of what you wanted, it went back and forth. So for clarity, she put exactly what you wanted, plus what the other commissioners asked for. So everybody had a bite at the apple, and it went out that way.
Okay. Because it's very sloppy and things that were in there, and former Commissioner Becker as well referenced it, that there was items in there that are more public records requests than actual forensic audit requests. And a lot of it also went into investigations into campaigns and accuracies and things like that. So what I think would be valuable, if we want to go this route, Mayor, is we can bisect this and have one that's specifically focused on finances, and the one, we can have an investigation into all of our campaigns, the accuracies of our promises and things like that. I think that would be valuable for all the current members that are elected, as well as any past ones that you choose to add to that, if we want to investigate campaigns. And I think that's the route we should be going then. And Attorney Shepherd, who would be, I guess, the governing agency to initiate an investigation? Is that a third party? Is that the state level, state attorney? Is it a federal level that would investigate campaigns?
It's not federal because it's not a federal office unless there's some other allegations involved that are far beyond just elections, such as honest services fraud. In terms of who would instigate it, that's going to be an individual complainant. Somebody has to bring a complaint in order for somebody to start investigating, unless there's been a report that involves, you know, at a certain high level, FDLE worrying about corruption and that sort of thing. So the typical election complaint is alleged to the Florida Elections Commission or Commission on Elections, I forget how they name their agency, but there's also another agency, I can't remember the name of it, but it's Election Crimes. It was one of the things that was instigated after the 2020 election to look at voter fraud and so forth and so on. So depending on what the allegations are, there's two different organizations that look at it. And obviously, at certain level, if it was, you know, significant criminal activity, you could even see it go to FDLE. But it doesn't happen automatically. It's not like they're all here, you know, poking around trying to find a crime. Somebody's got to report something first. With credible evidence to initiate an investigation, so that's how that goes.
Okay. So Mayor, do you want to go down that route on all of our, would you like to issue those?
Is this all part of that, the list that he, that the mayor had provided?
Well, he provided six audibly, and then he added a seventh one, somehow got it added in.
Yeah, but I did respond to it.
Yeah. I think yours are in there.
Your questions that were also included here? Stuff was included.
Well, the one question was, in all of them, was, okay. What I said was, what does the individual candidate donations and expenditures have to do with forensic audit?
It's not for us to determine. It's not staff's decision to make and determine what your question is there.
Well, you know, because when the mayor gave that as the last thing for his mayor's report, it was, this had more to do with election?
Again, staff does not need to be in the middle of a political battle. We asked what you all want and did there, we put it in there, and we pushed it out. But we're not going to be bickering amongst y'all. We're here to serve the citizens and do our best for the citizens.
Yeah, but that wasn't asked by the citizens.
Pardon me?
The list that the mayor reported wasn't asked by the citizens.
No, I'm just saying, so we put everything that you all asked, as each of that came in, we put it in there and said, okay, we'll let it wash out that way.
Yeah, but, you know, it doesn't make sense.
Again, staff shouldn't be in the middle of this.
Who put you guys in the middle of it?
You all do when you bicker, and everybody wants something in the bid, everybody.
No, I asked questions. I didn't ask for an audit.
Well, I think that's the point. It was all get input, and then it's refined and then put out. It was never refined. It was sloppy, there's inaccuracies.
Commissioner, I'm not here to argue with you. Even when staff was working hard, and the purchasing staff worked very hard trying to get this in on a Thursday, you sent your comments back two minutes before it had to be put in the Sentinel. Two minutes before it's supposed to be?
I met your timeline.
And then you said, well, I'll send it to you tomorrow on Friday. Blanche was doing her very best to try to meet your needs, and she felt that you were pushing it off. And we ask, what do you want? She got up here and told you at one of the commission meetings, she needed clarity. And you said it was clearly given to you in the paper that you sent her, the email you sent her. Okay? And that's how she directed it.
Sure. So Mayor, again, would you like to bisect this and have a separate investigation into the campaigns?
No.
So do you want to remove yours out of the forensic audit? So you're just trying to derail a forensic audit that we all voted for?
No, no, I'm not trying to derail, just adding a few things to it.
Well, most of that's a public record anyways, so I don't know if we need to do an education course on public records versus our forensic audits. I mean, maybe that'll be beneficial as well. It seems like there's some confusion there. So again, once that comes back from, if anybody bids on this and probably won't, we'll clean that up at that point then, because this was clearly meant to derail versus actually, and attack versus actually trying to clean up our finances and move forward with it. So with that, that's all I have.
All right.
I have my other item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I found it. I would like for us to consider renewing the lease for the chamber, for the building. That was the other item that I had.
We will, we can put that out as a business item for next.
That needs a lot of discussion, though.
Well, it'll be a business item for next. You want to put it as a business item for next?
Sounds good.
Okay. Before you do hit the gavel, and I omitted to ask this question because I don't get to? to really ask you direct, but there's been the Vietnam, the businessman, yes.
We're putting it together.
Okay, yeah, because he called me this morning.
Now, he's not been very forthcoming with the information, so we had to, yeah.
Okay, yeah, because he, he called me this morning, so I just, I told him I would follow up on it. I appreciate it, thank you. And is the June 19th date the?
Is that, I don't remember which date Stacy's got it.
Yeah, it was the June 19th.
Okay, all right, got you. Okay.
From me. I, I'll begin with each of y'all, the Impact D studies for the police, fire and recreation are wrapping up. We met with them, Ralph Tillis, your favorite consultant, last week and they're about complete with that. They just needed to fine tune and double check the request out of the police, the fire and the recreation department. So those numbers are coming in. Based on those numbers, just so you know, it'll be a probably a lengthy process because it has to meet the extenuating circumstances requirements under state statute requiring two public hearings and some other processes. But I wanted to make you aware of that and the reason those numbers are coming in high is we're seeing inflation hit us on everything when it deals with construction or equipment. Fired trucks are up, constructions up, those costs are just going through the roof. So I didn't want y'all caught off guard, they're coming and I'll sit with y'all, I need to get a feel for what direction y'all want to go. So just want to let you know. And then the other thing is, I know there was some social media stuff going out there that we were kicking the VFW out, that is incorrect. You all have, you all were the ones that reviewed and approved the final contract. They're there. All that's happened is that we'll take over the day-to-day operations of the VFW versus them doing it and we'll continue forward.
And to add to that too, we just got the signed fully executed contract back as well, so.
We, we had the previous executed before y'all saw it the last time it made a change, so we had to go and make the change and re-execute.
I just want to state, it's, we have it.
It does, we have it.
Oh, my love is here. Hi, I just saw you. I'm sorry.
He's making sure you're here working.
I know, I'm so sorry, I didn't see him here. Oh, you surprised me.
Take it easy.
Anything else, Chuck?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, Cliff, anything from you?
Well, I can do public records, it'll take about 45 minutes, or I can tell you I have no report.
Awesome, thank you. All right. Under the mayor's report, yes, great Art Folichvell, one of the best we've had in, gosh, a decade. It, it was so good that I bought a hat early on and Saturday morning and by 10 o'clock when we went to go get my, my hat, they'd already sold it twice. So they, they promised me they'd make me a hat like the one they had for me. Just great swearing in, you know, what support on the reelection of Commissioner Nesta and newly elected Commissioner Anderson, it was just great turnout, it was just great to see a lot of people energized about the, the election. So this Saturday, May 4th, 5:00 PM, the Zac Brown Tribute Band will be at the amphitheater, should be a great show. So y'all that like 80s music, they are a great band, should be a great band to listen to. And yeah, and Commissioner Smith brought it up, the prayer breakfast will be tomorrow morning, doors open 6:30 AM. We, I am so excited, when I served in the legislature a few years ago, we had David Barton from Wall Builders was our keynote speaker for the legislative prayer breakfast and an amazing individual, talks about the, the 50 signers of the Declaration and how they impacted not only government, but how they impacted our religious beliefs and, and they talk about that, that our government was founded on secular principles and they go through this, the process, showing how all these members of the, that 50 members that signed it and what they did to, to, to make religion a part of our, our government. So regardless of what people tell you, we are not a secular government. So if you get a chance, if you hadn't signed up, I think they've got a few more seats available, very well worth the effort. So we don't have David Barton, but we have his son, Tim, and so we're really excited about that. And then, as you know, also brought up, we'll have at 12 o'clock noon, we'll have on the steps of City Hall, we'll have a noon service as well. So with that.
Mayor, hold on just one moment, I just want to make it very clear that we are going into a closed door. Labor negotiations pursuant to Chapter 7, Florida State Statute 447 dot 605 for labor negotiations and this meeting will be concluded and then we'll finish up there.
With that, we'll take, take a while. 10 minutes break, everybody.